Good evening and welcome to the Safety, Security, Transportation Subcommittee meeting. This evening, we are in the George Ram Little Theater at Brockton High School. And today's Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, and the time is 6:07 PM. I would, uh, before we establish a quorum, I'd like to read this. In addition to attending, the public can view this meeting via television on Comcast, Channel 8, and 107.1 HD version, and online via this link, www.youtube.com/thebrocktonchannels. I would like to establish a quorum. Mrs. Cynthia Rivas-Mendez.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yeah.
And the Chair, Joyce Asak, is also present. So we do have a quorum for this evening's meeting. First item on our agenda is a presentation by Sergeant Livingston regarding some of our safety measures that we're taking within our schools. Sergeant Livingston.
You got that?
Oh, do you have a presentation?
Yup, I have a little. Good evening. I'm Sergeant Mike Livingston with the Brockton Police. I'm the liaison to the Brockton School Department. I've been going on three years up here at the Brockton School District, being this liaison. And the start of this year has been exciting and challenging at the same time. But the 13 men and women that I oversee and supervise, they're up for the challenge. And I'm, just so you know, that we handle a multitude of calls to handle the safety and concern needs for our many children in the school district, but along with our faculty and our teachers and so on. Items like motor vehicle accidents, behavioral, assisting with behavioral issues and therapeutic needs, medical assistance, and just being an advocate and resource for our children and for our faculty. I'm excited and grateful that you guys have reached out to me to give you an update on our emergency safety list and for all our schools, I'm sorry, emergency safety plan for our schools, how we stand with hiring new officers for us, and then how our update with our metal detectors and our cameras, and likewise with our radios. So first thing we'll talk about is our safety update, is our emergency plan for all our schools. It should be known that our emergency plan is an overall comprehensive design, particularly to every one of our schools, to tackle or to, it consists of issues concerning the floor plans, the specific characteristics of the school, a point of contact, the principals, safety plans, emergency situations, fire evacuations, incident command, protocols for communications, and so on, not to be limited to that. And I'm happy to tell you that, as the display tells you, that we are 90 to 95% complete throughout the whole district, 90 to 95. That's a pretty tall task, that a lot of hard work was put into it, but we only have to finalize a couple of little bit more things to finish this up, and we should have that done. And it should also be noted that all our stay in place and lockdown procedures are printed, posted, and practiced, and along with our fire evacuations have been going on monthly and been recorded accordingly. And the one thing that I really want to touch on that has to be in the forefront of all our minds, one of the major challenges that we're having this year is social media, school threats and threats. I'm sure just the last couple of weeks, it seemed week after week that we were tackling these. But I do want to encourage you that through experience, I've been up here for like three years now, and I know that these things always spike right around holidays, start of the school, maybe something that happened in, in the city, and they go on and go on, and obviously it puts fear, strikes fear in all of our concerned parents and even students. But what I do want to stress to you that through our experience and our hard work with, we have IT technology investigative tools. We collab with our faculty, it's such a great resource to get to the bottom of these. Not only that, we collab also with the social media platforms. They work with us and get exigent requests to really identify the culprit, if you will, to get to the bottom of this, to sift out. And again, like I said, these happen quite frequently. It might seem new to some folks, but I call this the, the new fake 911 calls. But we get really to the bottom of them, but unfortunately does take a lot of time. So that's with our safety plan and major items that we really are tackling this year and will continue on. So I think this is a perfect segue, I like that picture I got up there, is where we stand with hiring more officers. Again, we tackle so many calls with our children and our teachers and, and throughout the whole city and the whole district. I mean, think about how many schools that we have, and I'll give you an example of, like, traffic is one of our major issues. And if something comes up and one of our officers are tied up and we can't get to that traffic post, we're getting that call right away. Where is this officer at? And unfortunately, more pressing things are needed. And that's why we need more officers to be that advocate, to be that resource. But I want to tell you that we reached out, as you'll see, to Hannah Hands Consulting Group, this police agency, consulting police agency, generated a test for us, and entry police level exam for us, and on April, we conducted and they proctored the tests, and we had, I think, over 80 people register, but 57 people actually showed up and took the test right here in the red building at Brockton, and it was a great show out. We took the test in April, and out of all those participants, we took the top 16 scores, the top 16 scores, all those guys are all in the 90s or better, and from that 16, we conducted interviews and sifted down and got to our four candidates that we really feel strongly about and are looking to put them in an academy. But time sensitivity is something of a fact, of a factor. The way the process goes, we have to vet them and do a background check for every, every one of those. Oh, and just to tell you, we also have two alternates also, just in case something falls through. We want to be ready to have these individuals ready to hit the, hit the school with us, hit the streets, if you will, so they can help, you know, protect and serve with us. So, but out of those four, and that process is time sensitive in the fact that after they complete their background check, you have to remember, Internal Affairs with the Brockton Police has to do the background checks on the municipal side also. So they're doing double duty, doing our, vetting our guys, vetting their guys, so it is a time-consuming kind of factor and getting that in. But after they complete that, we move on. They have to have a physical, a medical physical, do a police, I'm sorry, a physical activity test and a psych evaluation. And once they complete all those, then we can apply for an academy. And this is where the time sensitivity comes in. We have to get them in an academy within six months of the completion of those three battery of tests. If not, then those tests will be considered invalid, and we'll have to redo those tests to get it within that window. And we are looking at several police academies up, and I know this is going to sound like a hike, but Linfield, but it's a newer academy, but we, we got to get our guys in there. Our people need them, and our constituents need them, our kids need them, we need them. So we're definitely hustling up to see if we can get up to Linfield a little closer. We're looking at the MBTA Police Academy in Quincy and the Randolph Police Academy. So hopefully, we can get those guys in, so.
Sergeant Livingston, so we're hitting the six-month mark. How are we doing as far as getting them?
We're fine.
We're good, okay.
Because we haven't applied yet for the academy. We're still in this stage. It should start rolling faster, but we're still getting our background checks now. That's a great question. But once we get our background checks going, then we can't even consider an academy till those three battery of tests are complete. That's when the clock starts.
Okay. And out of the four and then the two alternates, any females?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
So we have two females in the, in the four, and a female in the, in the alternate.
Okay.
All right.
So far, any members have any questions? Nope, good, okay. Continue.
Now, just to piggyback on, now we're going to talk about metal detectors, but remember we were talking about the veiled threats with the social media? And one of the requests were to tweak the metal detectors. What I really want to stress to you about our metal detectors is they are exceeding our expectations on what they've done. I have a very good working relationship with Chia Industries that produce these metal detectors to really prevent that sort of weaponry coming into our schools. They work, I'm able to adjust the sensitivity level too, so we can still get our kids in at a timely fashion and preventing any kind of weapons from getting on campus. And, but again, they're working just as advertising. Not only are they doing the job of detecting, which the main focus is, but they also doing a wonderful job of being a deterrent from people from potentially bringing those weapons. And then think about this one, think of all the fear that we have when you see those threats. I'm hoping that it'll play a part in being a peace of mind to know that we have, we are actively pursuing to have these weapons not in our school. And, and I'm so appreciative that we have so many of them, just in case one goes down. Again, they're under warranty, and I really, it brings me back to my old Coast Guard days of being an electronic technician. Sometimes, you know, if it goes down, they give me direct instructions, so we don't have to mail it back. It's, it's that simple. We just swap out, they'll mail me a part, swap it and put it right on, and then we're up and running again. But these, these things are wonderfully made, durable, lightweight, portable, been able to get them over to the, to the football games, use them at the basketball games, wherever we need them. So they've been really working to our expectations and exceeding them. Then to continue on, likewise with our radios, I've been talking to Ken La Grice, I just made up this title for him, our communication specialist. He told me our radios are right where we need to be, but I do want to bring this to our attention that during the operations meeting, we did bring up radios, and we also brought up cameras and thinking of where else could we place cameras. We're still waiting for our Stop the Cops, Stop the Violence Prevention Program grant. And if we're, we're looking to tap into that resource, that funding, to actually utilize that if we need to put a camera here or even beef up our radios. But it looks like, especially with our staffing right now, we have more than enough radios right now. Hopefully, we can get our staffing up to accommodate that. Oh, no, I didn't want to go that fast yet. I did want to conclude with one thing, with stating about our officers, our greatest resource. One thing that I had to stress about our officers is that they are definitely dedicated to the school police, and I can name five officers that declined going over to the city side and staying with the school police. And it isn't really out of altruism, but it really is out of practice, being practical in this way. Our mantra, obviously, is to protect and serve, but they really take that personal, and this is where that practicality comes in. All of our officers, in some form or fashion, and many of them have children that go, are in our school department, in, in our schools in some way. And, and having these conversations with them, I'm thinking like four of them right now, said they want to take hold and take control to protect and serve not only their kids, but all the kids in our school district. And just think of, put this peace of mind in you, that these officers are protecting their kids, but your kids also. They're protecting our kids collectively. So I'm really appreciative to the dedicated work of them and how they have chose to stick with us. So that does conclude my presentation, but I do appreciate you giving me the opportunity to share with you the safety update, and I look forward to keeping you updated and many more to come, okay?
Before we get any questions, I do apologize, I want to recognize that Acting Superintendent, Dr. Cobb's, is here. I was rushing to make sure we were on time.
Yeah.
We're on a couple of minutes late, so Dr. Cobb's is also present at the facilities, I'm sorry, Safety Traffic and Transportation Subcommittee. So a couple of questions. As far as the metal detectors, is there routine maintenance that we do to make sure we don't run into one that's not working?
That's another good question, Joyce. Let's limit them.
We try.
Absolutely, because I, I turn them on and weekly go through, they, they do a self-calibration, so it's not like I'm digging in and tweaking anything. They do a self-calibration, but frequently, again, such an excellent question, frequently, I pack my bag with various items of weapons and just, just to make sure that they're working, but I know they're working, but it's just good so I can reassure if someone asks a question like that. Yes, I frequently just went through the, the metal detectors or the weapon detectors with a tactical knife.
Perfect.
And with a pipe.
Yeah.
Not a pipe bomb, but simulating a pipe bomb in a firearm.
Just to do that. So I know in the past, one of the issues we've, we've run into is there are so many doors that people can gain access to at Brockton High. So I know we're working on different ideas to try to work with that. So I know right now, we need, you know, more staffing to, to help, and we are working on that, but.
Joyce, can I answer that?
Sure, absolutely.
I saw that need too, and we put out perimeter checks to actually have cruisers going around and logging so we can help facilitate that, because I understand that is a need. Last year, we had people, bodies on doors that helped that, but we don't have that, so we have to fill in the gap, if you will, you know, and that's, we're more than willing. That's why we need more officers also.
Definitely. So as far as, again, we're hitting the six-month mark, so these new officers, we're not going to see them till next year?
Yes, we're not hitting, oh, when you say the six-month mark.
Since April, yeah, from the day of the test, yeah.
Okay, all right, perfect, I'm glad.
Because it's been like six months since April. I believe it was April 1st, the test.
It was right, April 1st or 7th, it was a sad.
Yeah.
But, but truth to be told, I, I've been in constant, not constant, but frequent. I just texted them to, hey, look for me, I'll be on TV, you know? But I've been in communication with these guys, letting them know that, reassuring them, because I, I understand when I first got on the job, 24 years, that gap from when you take the test and sometimes communications lacks, that's in even in the advancement books, that one of the major issues with recruits is that lack of communication. So I doubled down, talking to all four candidates, letting them know that we're still on board, this is where we at. I do understand one is in the process of getting their background checked right now, so I'm, we're moving.
Okay. And then, any of the members with any questions or comments?
Cynthia.
Mrs. Rivas-Mendez and Mr. Rodriguez.
In regards to what you were saying about we need more officers, can you go over what kind of questions are in the test that they took, that we have the scores in front of us, and then the timeline of the hiring process?
So it, it's a generic entry exam. I had nothing to do with the test, you know, I didn't, I just made sure everything, people had the parking, but they proctored the test, they generated the test, I had no influence on it, you know? I do recall looking at one of the questions, and I was already intimidated by it, so whoo, I'm glad I'm already on, you know, so, but.
It's like, it's like based, like common sense questions?
Common sense.
Or can they study for this test?
No, it's basic common sense questions that, you know, similar to a civil service test for police entry exam.
And then, can you go over the timeline? I know you said that right now, you did the 16 interviews, you have four.
Yes.
Four that you're, that ideally you want to move forward.
Yes.
And then you're looking at their physical, their background, and where are we among that timeline in regards to the test still being effective?
So the, we're at the point, we're still doing the background checks.
Okay.
Once we complete those background checks, that's when things can really start moving. We can start scheduling the PAT test, the medical exam, and then the, the psych evaluation. That's, once we can get the background checked on, that's when things really start rolling. But you want to be cautious with that, because you want to get it rolling so fast, excuse me, get it so fast, that if there's not an academy ready for them, then we're kind of stuck in limbo, and we have to stay within that six-month period of the first start date and them completing all their battery of exams. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So that's why, so we, we're moving methodically, getting these background checks, but once that's done, it should really start layering, going down fast.
Okay. All right. And I don't know if this question would apply to you, but I know like when we talk about traffic, especially transitions in the Brockton High School, I know when Tony and I came up here, that was one of our biggest concerns, was having people in the hallways as kids transition. Is that a question to ask you?
That's more for staffing for Brockton High, to, you know, for floor teachers and for hall monitors and everything. I mean, we still want to be a presence there, but we really are there just to ensure that everything is going. If they need our assistance, we're readily available, but that's really for school disciplinary and conduct for them.
Okay. So when you refer to traffic, are you talking about like traffic?
Yes, traffic.
Outside, okay, all right, thank you.
Motor vehicle traffic, yes.
Before Mr. Rodriguez asks his questions, can we just touch base on Enforced 911? Where are we with that?
So I think we are, I would have to tap in my notes, I have to apologize, because I was talking to Tobias Collins about that, and I want to put a ballpark figure of 50%, and that might sound, you have to forgive me for that one. But I know Lieutenant Banaca did the overview, so we can get the floor plans for all the school, and there was some sort of late entry, and that's why it's just holding, holding us up, but.
I'm not sure who I heard it from, but I, I think it was a delay on the actual company, because we were supposed to have it effective as of September.
Yeah.
Dr. Cobb's, do you have any updates on Enforced 911?
So I would say that Sergeant Livingston's estimate, about 50% or so is, is pretty accurate. We've, we've completed the, the first couple of phases of uploading all the data for the schools, like I said, the floor plan, the school layouts, the school staffing, administrative staff, and, and the people that we have to upload into the system for each location that will get notifications from, you know, again, the teachers can opt in because it will bring up their, their cell phones or their PCs. The PCs will be automatic, but the cell phones are their personal ones, so we've pretty much gotten to that stage of uploading all the school data, and then we also, they had to upload the data from the police department and the contacts and who's going to be notified for any, any incidents. So we've pretty much got that, that part just about done, so we're moving to the next phase, which will be kind of testing and, and, you know, alerting, notifying the system to activate it. So we're probably 50%, but it's a lot of backend IT technical kind of stuff at this point to go, go, the next step is.
Do we, do we have like a projected date?
No, but you know, I would, I would say we're, we're, it would be probably at least before the 1st of the year, around that time, but more than likely sooner than that, but it, you know, again, it's just, it's difficult because people change, and I'm sure you're aware of our email system that we use, and we have to purge the system again to make sure all the people that have left are retired or not notified in the system, so that, that takes some time.
So until we get, until we get this up and running, I mean, I would feel more comfortable. I'm not sure about the other.
We're doing the same way that we've done it always. I'm calling and notifying everyone and.
I, I just want to make sure that all the schools have enough radios. I know some schools, we're waiting on the Enforced 911, but if we can maybe just check with the schools and make sure, I mean, that could be a temporary fix.
We, we honor radio requests as they come in, but you know, we're, you know, oftentimes the radio requests come in for a radio for every teacher in every classroom, and we just cannot do that, we can't afford it. These radios are $800 plus dollars each, you know? So, but they have enough adequate for the staff and for locations in the building. And, and, and a lot of times, the request comes in because there's a problem with the PA system or a perceived problem, and like for instance, at East right now, we, that system went down, and we have, we're replacing some major parts to it, but we'll, I just expedited that process, it'll be up and running sooner than later. So that's the first thing to address, to make sure the PA systems work, and if they're saying we need radios because it doesn't work, it, sometimes it's, it's a, it's a problem with the equipment that, with the staff, it's a user, you know, problem, if you will. That happened at Pluff, for example, and we, they're saying nothing works, we can't call any classrooms, and as it turns out, somebody figured out how to pick up the phone in the room and turn the switch off so it doesn't call the office. So we had to go and look at every room and fix it, so they do work, but.
Okay.
So we, we do have adequate radios, if we need them, we'll get extra radios, but they're not expensive, and as you know, we're watching the budget very closely right now.
Okay.
But if we, we have some on hand, then we'll make sure we have a stock on hand as needed.
I mean, I know the budget, we're watching it, but safety's my top priority. I got to just make sure that our teachers and our staff have the capability of being able to reach the office in case of, in case of an emergency, because sometimes the cell phones do not work in the schools, they're not getting good reception. But Mr. Rodriguez, I apologize if you wanted to.
Thank you. On the hiring process, you know, we have 13 and bringing four, 17 total. When it comes to, I know, you know, with the background and the physical agility test, I know you have that six-month period, wouldn't it be suitable to do the PT test prior to the background? Because, you know, you invest in time and it takes a long time to do a background, and you do this background, and then you have these candidates that you selected can't pass the PT, because it happens.
So that, that point has been brought up, however, to counter that, if, let's say we pass the PAT test. Perfect. Then we, that test, the clock now starts, right? So then, let's say we do the background check, then we do the psyche file, and then we finally can reach out to our police academy. But if that, because we started with the PAT test, the clock started there, now we're outside of the window.
But I, I know, you know, we voted to have this exam, but I mean, like, we're not under the guidance of civil service, you know, when it comes to, to that standard, but I mean, you know.
That, that's the police academies.
The academy, but I think, you know, if there's something that we can do prior that doesn't, you know, tie into that, meaning like, you know, prior to you taking this exam, you have to pass the, these basics, these basic standards.
Okay.
I mean, something to look at.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, I know it's a, it's a time constraint, but I, I had, you know, our last Subcommittee asked, do we have, have we made like an analysis of how many officers we would actually need to have a sustainable police force, like actually, you know, school police officers, that do we, is it 20, 25 to make sure that, you know?
I, I would say, considering people taking time off, maybe sickness and what have you, I would say 20.
20.
I know, I know where we at with finance, we can make it work with whatever we have, these guys are that dedicated, but I would say optimum, 20 officers.
20.
That's dealing with traffic, implementing a swing shift, you know, so we, that eliminate that overtime to coverage for, for traffic, 20.
Yeah, because, you know, looking at, I know, right now, we don't have, you know, weekend coverage, and then all the assets that we do have, I know you guys have the ability during the summertime, you know, to tweak the hours, on that note, that's why I'm, you know, trying to think, you know, what's a suitable number to make sure that we do, because, you know, this, you know, the high school is used around the clock on weekends, and.
This.
There's a lot of events going on at the middle schools and outfield, so I was just trying to see if there was like an actual analysis of what the actual number would be to make sure that, you know, we're staffed properly.
Absolutely. So that's where I'd, I'd sat back with Lieutenant Maker, deliberated back and forth, and that number, we, right around the 20 number.
20.
Would really be the optimal number.
And as far as equipment, is there like a, a need for, I know we received a grant.
Well, that's not, I, I reached out to Michelle, we're still waiting for that, if we've been awarded that grant.
Oh, so we haven't even been awarded the, okay.
So I, I.
I was only a question.
That's what I was under the understanding too, but then I reached out to Michelle Bolton, and she said, no, right around the end of, I'm sorry, of October, we should know for sure if we have it, and that's why I addressed.
It's usually around this time of year, the October, November timeframe, we usually get notification. It's been pretty consistent that we, we get awarded what we requested through the cops grant. As Sergeant Livingston said, that we were able to upgrade the radio system already across the district, including new antennas, base radios, cruiser, police officer cruiser radios, handheld radios, so we, you know, it's pretty, pretty consistent every year we get the award.
As far as a, a need for the department, you know, equipment, vehicle, I mean, we, everything's in line, I mean, is there anything that needs to be updated? Do we have enough vehicles to cover the new staffing that we're going to be putting on board? I mean.
Fine, we, we can always use more vehicles because they are maintenance and so on, but I think we do, I think a couple are tasers, I know one taser, we're borrowing from Brockton PD for one of our newest hires, but again, we're waiting, we put in that, a request, and that's why I opted to. But again, we're waiting, we put in that a request, and that's why I opted to request it to let this officer borrow this until we get the funding, and then we can get the tasers on our own. So I don't want us to spend something where we're going to hopefully, as being consistent, get rewarded and come out of one fund where we can get it granted to us, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick question on the grant, do we have, do we have a dollar amount? An idea of a dollar amount that this grant is?
I believe it was a seven hundred. The COPS grant?
The COPS grant, yeah.
Seven hundred thousand?
It was.
It's been a while, probably about that, seven hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Usually, if the award is around five hundred or so, that's what we, that last time, I think it was, the last cycle was like a little over five hundred thousand.
Right, so that's why I was, that's why I almost lowballed us and said five hundred, that's why I thought we were going to get it.
On that grant, that where we purchase, you know, the tasers and anything else?
Absolutely, yeah, that's where it's geared for.
So, one last question. So are we doing like school tours with our police officers to get them familiar with our schools, a lot of the new ones? Do they just go, which is, and actually, it's not a bad idea because we have students who've seen the officers, getting familiar with them, getting more comfortable with them, but letting them get in there and tour to get familiar.
That is, how we have done that, either through our field training officers, we see various, all the schools, but also we have a rotation through all our middle schools of to be their designated, monthly to be, no, I'm sorry, weekly, to be their designated SRO. So they get familiar with all different schools. Then they'll have some assigned to the high school, some assigned to our middle schools. And then our west side and east side dual type mobile units will also visit all our elementary schools. It's a pretty good scheme, system that we have working.
So the last question I have is, I know I touched base with you on this. I'd like to see, and I'm sure we have this, do we have an actual go-to manual at every single school in case of an emergency? They go to this manual because you might not have electricity, you might not have internet service, but it's like your manual, where to go, where our students are going, and we have copies of these all at one location?
That is the emergency safety plan, yeah. It's pretty comprehensive, it has all that in there, yes.
And they know in case of an emergency, you go to this book, and this is where our students, this is the closest parking area. This is, this is where the buses are going to meet if we have to go on foot. Because a lot of times, you might not have internet, you might not have electricity or be able to call out. But that way, we know where our schools, where each individual school has their own specialized. I believe Tobias worked on something similar, yeah. Okay, I remember talking to Tobias, okay, perfect. So that I like, Mr. Rodriguez, did you have another question?
What's the number for the SROs right now?
We, so we're actually, and I appreciate that about the school department, providing so many offices. We're actually assuming those roles as SROs, but we have been afforded one SRO from the chief, from the Brockton municipal side. And that's, and she's, she's unbelievable, that's Officer Nicole Anderson.
I, I wasn't, I know with the grant, there's a certain amount of number that needs to be within the, that needs to be within the schools. So just having one, I don't think we're even meeting that criteria. And that's something that we need to look into because we could, we could lose that grant.
Okay, I definitely will, as of tomorrow.
Any other questions or comments?
Mrs. Rivas Mendez? Sorry, I know the metal detectors you said are working well, they're lightweight. Is everybody going through the metal detectors or just students as of now?
So that has been addressed because it was brought to my attention that some parents were coming through to pick up kids. We've addressed that, that everyone now goes through the metal detectors.
Okay.
This on oversight.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Sajid Livingston.
Thank you.
So, thank you again. Next, we have Dr. Murray to address our transportation department. So you're going to go over some opening of school update regarding the busing and any issues that we've run into in your presentation.
Okay, good evening. So I give you an update first about our transportation inventory, if you will. We currently have sixty-two large buses, sixty-one of them are operational. The sixty-second bus has been in a repair shop and was supposed to be finished the end of September, we're hoping the end of October. Typically, industry standard is you hold ten buses in reserve, which would be six, ten percent. Now, we hold three. We have sixty-five microbuses or vans, we call them vans, sixty-five of which are all operational. We hold three of those in as spares. We currently have eight wheelchair vans, seven of which are operational. The eighth is a used vehicle that we purchased that we're just waiting to get plates and stickers, DOT and state inspection. We have five seven-D vehicles, all of which are operational. Currently, we have one hundred and thirty-eight bus and van drivers. We have four additional drivers that are in various stages of completing their training, which consists of classroom and driving for a total of sixty hours. We've actually had a couple of people that have licenses and drive for other companies that have applied. And so we actually do check rides, background checks, drug tests, those kinds of things. We currently have three seven-D drivers, but we just onboarded a fourth today. And we have another person that we're just finishing some of the paperwork on. And again, they have to do the drug test, and we'll have a full complement of seven-D drivers for our seven-D vans. So that's kind of our, our inventory in terms of vehicles. Our staffing, we currently have two dispatchers, a safety and training officer, a dispatch supervisor, administrative assistant, and a transportation director who also does the special ed billing along with the McKenney-Vento billing. And then we have one technician in Jay Hopkins who supervises the fixed operations, and then myself. So that's our staffing. We are facing some challenges. The system is stressed in terms of student numbers, that's obviously no one's fault. We started the year, for example, with one thousand three hundred and seventy door-to-door students. Those are our special education students that ride the vans. In the last six weeks, we've added eighty-eight students to those vans, which requires that the van routes and van schedules change a little bit. Our parents have been super cooperative with us, as I couldn't be more appreciative of our elementary schools who really bear the burden of these changes in that third tier. That does not include the additions of McKenney-Vento students or out-of-district placement students. We've received, just over the weekend, five McKenney-Vento additions. So the numbers continue to grow, transportation-wise, students. We try to create a balance with our vans. Obviously, we don't want smaller children on the vehicles for over an hour. We're getting to that point, that some of them are crowded. At the end of September, we have students, or the drivers rather, do a, we call it a rider report. Essentially, they, they map how they do their route, the pickup times, and also what the numbers are in their buses. We already know that we have a couple of buses that are really full. Once we get all that data, which we've collected last week and the beginning of this week, then we'll make changes to some of our big bus stops to try to shift some of those numbers so the buses aren't as crowded. But again, folks have been really cooperative with us in terms of, you know, bringing things to our attention and then, you know, allowing us to address them. Anytime we get a complaint from a staff member or a citizen, principal, teacher, it's investigated. Typically, the minor stuff or stuff that's more of a kind of an operational thing, we'll address ourselves. But we also have a disciplinary process with the dispatch supervisor and the safety and training officer. And then we refer any of our more significant transgressions directly to HR, where they will deal with them along with the union folks for discipline. That's really it. The biggest thing is, again, we have about two hundred and forty students who we do not provide transportation for, but who are transported by vendors. That is a direct result of the pre-K students that we have, the large numbers of pre-K students who are the most neediest and the youngest. And as a result, we felt it was important for those students to be on our vans with the radios, the training, familiarity with the schools. And we did have a meeting in July with all of our vendors. Every vendor has to provide evidence of insurance, valid insurance, you know, valid operation certificates. Any of their drivers had to be cordoned, fingerprinted, all of those are at HR. And then they go through this big meeting, but they go through a pretty intensive indoctrination process, if you will, with Jen Briggs and Jen Perez in terms of expectations for the treatment of our students, timeliness, those kinds of things, communication with us if there are changes or issues with their vehicles, just like we would with our own drivers. They're all given plaques and laminated placards to put in their vehicles so that there are instances where we aren't able to reach all of our parents in as timely a fashion as we like if we have a large number of our drivers calling. But at least we, we know that the parents know that if this vehicle shows up, that they're, they've been checked out. And we feel as confident as we could be. I would obviously prefer that everybody be in one of our own vehicles that we control. But we just simply don't have the vehicles now, and that, I don't think is anyone's fault. The numbers have just increased dramatically over the last couple of years. And again, with the advent of the pre-K testing and then the resulting law that requires them by three years old, if they do test, to have needs, to be transported, has really stressed our system, and the folks have been great about it. But it is, it is a very demanding situation. I think, all in all, things have gone off pretty well. Some changes down in the yard to try to ensure that our vehicles are leaving, to pick the students up in complete one-hundred percent functioning order. That would be all of the lights, all that kind of stuff. We have two technicians in the yard at five-thirty, about quarter, quarter-six, actually. And then the vehicles don't start until six o'clock, but they all have to go through one way. And, you know, we have some of the minor stuff, bulbs, those kinds of things in the yard, can affect repairs right there. Today, we had a couple of flat tires, long weekend, they go low. So they'll go right up to the shop, and one of the two guys will go up there, swap tires so that they're not late, and, you know, they get where they're supposed to be.
Thank you. So you had gone over some of the numbers with me, Dr. Murray.
Correct.
If you could just go over the numbers of the door-to-door, how they've increased? Because they increased, I mean, drastically, I mean, it was a huge...
So I, I think there's a little bit of a misnomer. For, for a number of years, close to a decade, Peggy Colia, marvelous, worked downtown and did a lot of the routing with first student. She did that in kind of conjunction with the special ed department, which was Jen Perez, who now kind of works with us. And even Peggy and Jen both could not get over the tremendous increase in the last couple of years of the door-to-door students. In just this short period of time, we've added eighty-eight students, you know, so it's over fourteen hundred. That is a lot of young people. And the vans are microbuses, you might see on the side, it'll say, you know, seats twenty-five students. You clearly cannot put twenty-five students who have a lot of challenges, who are younger, on a bus and just, you know, drive for hours. So there are limits to the number of students that you can put into these vehicles. And again, it's, it's challenging. I can't give you specifics. I know that in terms of dollar amounts, I kind of, I showed you, I think I gave Dr. Kobs kind of a brief summary. You can see some really dramatic changes in our McKenney-Vento dollars that we spend. That typically run out of Title I. And then a tremendous increase in our out-of-district expenses for those students that have really unique education needs. And those two expense areas, if you will, were always part of budgets not related to the non-net school bus transportation budget, which is typically kind of what people think of when they think of transportation as the schools.
Before I open the floor to questions, where are we with the Find My Bus app or?
Oh, good, I knew you were going to ask me that.
Of course I am, I've been asking.
So we've actually, we tried to do a little beta testing this summer to no avail, we didn't really get any takers. And then something that we discovered on our own in conjunction with Where's the Bus is that the computer VersaTrans and Where's the Bus, it calculates, for lack of a better term, the route that it thinks the bus should take. But obviously, it's not from Brockton. And so there are some streets with cars parked on both sides, like there's parts of Moraine that you don't want to take a big bus through. You know, the curves and the cars on both sides. And so, again, as part of that, a rider review, we asked the drivers to give us their route so that when they're out sick or they're doing some training or something, whoever covers for them kind of follows the same path, gets there at the same time. So what we've had to do is we have to go into VersaTrans now and program the route. We've been doing that since last week. We're hoping to have that finished by the end of this week. Jess Hodges is going to recruit a hundred folks from various tiers to kind of beta test this for a couple of weeks because we do have issues like with any electronic device. Occasionally, the GPS will fail. Occasionally, it will act kind of crazy, and we'll have a bus going a hundred miles an hour in the Atlantic Ocean. And obviously, we know that's not happening. So we're getting close. I think we get the data inputted into that VersaTrans system at the end of the week, get those hundred folks on board to actually have them test the app, the app itself. She has all of the information with regards to, you know, how you sign up. And then I think we'll be good to go. Our hope would be to have things rolling, you know, sometime, certainly before Thanksgiving.
So my last question is, there's a lot of roadwork going on in the city. So I know I'm going circles sometimes trying to get to where I need to go with all the detours. How are we doing as far as communication with the city? Because I know in the past, we weren't getting updated.
Dr. Kobs has been great about that. Anytime he's made aware of construction, he's, he's let us know. Ken Thompson of the facilities has let us know. Unfortunately, I think there are a lot of times where they're not made aware of it either, or there are situations where it's not necessarily something that's planned, but suddenly becomes an issue. For instance, over by the Brockton Hospital, they had some water seepage, and all of a sudden, they had to tear the road up for a couple of days to fix something. That's not one of those things where they had the luxury of, you know, letting us know. It does impact the timeliness of some of our drop-offs, especially in the afternoon, especially for our third-tier students, the elementary kids. Again, the parents have been fantastic, the schools, the administrators, so cooperative. We work with Jess Hodges and Kelsey Lynch. And basically, what I do in the afternoons is I work with the bus dispatcher. And as soon as we recognize that a bus looks like it's outside of that ten, fifteen-minute window for some reason, we'll let her know. And then they can actually text the parents and say, you know, bus thirty-four from the Baker is running fifteen to twenty minutes late. The northeast section of town, like North Quincy and Main Street, the last couple of weeks, they've been doing some work up there. And it's, you know, it's really challenging. We can watch the little icons of the bus on the map, and it will sit there. We'll, we'll look at the live picture to see what's going on, and they're just stuck in traffic. But the people have been really understanding, and the kids have been really good too, so.
Do we have a direct contact in that department that notifies us, or is it a department that notifies us?
I, you know, I think Dr. Kobs might be able to speak better, better to that. A couple of times, I can't think of the gentleman's name, I apologize right now, but...
Pat Hill is the director of EPW.
A couple of times, I've, we've actually had a concern, and we've expressed it to him, like, we'll say, like a tree, a wire is down, or, you know, a branch is down. And he's reached out a couple of times. So I think for the bigger projects, they've been really, you know, pretty cooperative. And as I said, Dr. Kobs, it can have been pretty helpful there too, so.
No, definitely, it's just, I just know, I was driving in circles, trying to figure out how I'm going to get to where I need to go when that whole area was detoured, so, and I can't imagine how our buses are doing that.
And again, keep in mind that the bus has to unload on the right, so it's even more of a challenge sometimes. I will say that the Brockton police, who have been involved in some of the bigger roadwork projects, have been really helpful in terms of letting the buses through, making sure the kids are safe, the bus is safe, understanding that, you know, we, we need to get the littlest kids as close to home as we can. So they've been very helpful. Same with school police, when we've had an issue. But it is a challenge, and it has created delays, it's really, you know, Friday traffic, for some reason, everyone's out on Friday afternoon, it's kind of crazy, so.
Thank you. Any questions from any of the members or any statements? Mrs. Rivas Mendez and Mr. Rodriguez?
So I have a question in regards to safety, the crosswalks when students get off the bus. There's not like a crosswalk... There's not like a crosswalk person, like a crossing guard?
Mm-hmm.
Is that your department, is that more the?
So occasionally, we'll have even drivers say to us that they have a situation where they don't feel that the street is safe for the kids to cross.
Yeah.
We'll reach out to Ken Thompson. He'll reach out to school police. A good example of that is if you come out of the high school and you take a right onto Forest, one of the first streets you come upon is Gordon. And there's always a large number of high school students that are, you know, just getting out of school and kind of, you know, rambunctious. We had an issue with some drivers concerned about the kids really not paying attention, so we asked for some help. And, you know, they stationed somebody over there. I think, I know Dr. Cobb's as the director of operations and then as the deputy superintendent, they go and kind of analyze all of the crosswalks over the whole city. And so when anything's brought to my attention or anybody in our office, the first thing we'll do is have our safety and training officer actually go out and kind of check it out. Even occasionally, somebody will call with a concern about a bus stop, that it's just, you know, it would be smarter if it's around the corner or if it's a little further up the street. So we'll send Miss Spano out right away just to check that out. And then if it's a stop, we can change. But if it's crossing guards or, you know, some other situation where, for instance, traffic doesn't seem to pay attention to the red lights on the buses or something like that, we'll notify Sergeant Livingston and he'll bump it up to the city folks or whomever.
So if there's a community person that has concerns, who would they reach out to about this?
Well, I mean, they could reach out to Transportation. They would probably come to myself or they might refer it to Miss Spano. And then if we go and check it out and it seems like it's a legitimate thing, we'd obviously check with the drivers. The other thing is that all of our buses are equipped with cameras. One of the things that we were able to do last year was actually secure two additional cameras, a camera in the very front of the vehicle, camera in the rear that focuses to the front and to the rear so we can actually see what oncoming traffic looks like, not just inside the bus. So, you know, if somebody has a concern, we can find out which vehicle goes there. We can kind of check it all out. And then obviously, if it's a situation where they feel it's warranted, then we let Ken or Dr. Cobb's know and then they kind of go from there.
Okay. And then I know you, I know Joyce asked about the Find My Bus application, the app. When did you say sometime, sometime next?
So we're hoping that we'd have that before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
It's really the tedious part, which I'm going to admit, we didn't really recognize as being an issue until we actually started to use it with some of our drivers. And the driver was going one way and the app was telling him, it's like the thing in your car, your phone, you know, oh, you missed the turn, but you can't go down that street. It's a one-way. And so this, this is just going to require that, you know, we have a, what, 130 some odd vehicles out there. We're going to have to reprogram their routes into the computer. But we made some good headway. We started on that about 10 days ago.
Okay. And then I just have two more questions. In regards to the increase on the door-to-door students? You said there's been an increase of 88 students. Usually, those students are because they require transportation through their individual education plan?
Correct.
Okay. And then out of, out of, out of placement district? So is that us transporting those students or is that private?
Typically, long before we had our own transportation department, any out-of-district-placed students, those are typically students that have really high needs that we don't meet here in the district. Those have always been transported by vendors, not, not by first student, not, but paid for by the Brockton Public Schools, the, as part of the special education budget. The McKinney Vento students, again, were also always transported outside of that non-net budget, but that's Title I. I, you could call it one of those underfunded mandates. I don't know that they get 100% reimbursement for that, but they are supposed to reimburse this for those costs. There is a kind of a complicated process. We've actually met with the attorneys to make sure that in some cases with students under Title I, that we're doing cost share with other districts, making sure that we're not, you know, absorbing the 100% of the burden from an expense standpoint. But there are certain obligations that we have legally that we just have to. But that, again, that is kind of a separate item, if you will, from our buses in terms of the, you know, buses and vans.
So going back to the microbuses where you said there's only 25 students that fit in a microbus, but there's 88 increase. So how is that with what we have in inventory?
So typically, that, again, when we say 88, it's not all in one tier, thank heavens, but it is probably predominantly in that third tier. And so the.
What are the tier ones and tier threes? Sorry.
Tier one is the high schools.
Okay.
Tier two would be the middle schools and then our high schools that we service that aren't necessarily Brockton Public Schools, Spelman, Trinity, New Heights, those types of places. And then the third tier is the elementary schools. And, you know, basically, again, there is a lot of shuffling that goes on. We're trying, the microbuses are a little bigger than the old vans, the old yellow, you know, first student vans that you might have seen. I mean, they can seat 25 students. We can take the golf team or like the girls volleyball team, teams that aren't huge, you know, those, those teams can fit in those vehicles. But it's just really a matter of, I think, what's right and what's practical with these youngest students and how many you can actually put on one of these microbuses. And, you know, we've got a couple now that are seven, which means, you know, they go all over the city depending on what program they're in. With the traffic and just, you know, the nature of where they're going, it can be, you know, a 45-minute, an hour ride. So when we have more students added, then the dispatch supervisor works with Jen Perez and they try to look at, you know, okay, here we're adding these couple of students. What makes sense? Can we change this bus, vans route a little bit and move this student onto this van? And it doesn't create a lot of continuity, unfortunately, for kids who really grab onto that. But again, we're just trying to do, you know, what is best for the largest group of students. And it's challenging. Like I said, it's stressing the vehicles and the system we currently have. And I don't think anybody could have predicted. I was, you know, recently just made aware of the whole dynamics of the pre-K testing and the results of that. So I think things have changed from before they, even when they just started to talk about the purchasing of vehicles. I think there's been a lot of changes number-wise and I'm not sure that, you know, anybody was really cognizant of that, so.
And then when we're, when we serve special education students that are door-to-door, there's a para that's required to be part of this commute?
So there are some students who have on their ed plan, their IEP monitor. And we are legally and technically not supposed to transport that student without the monitor. There are other students who have IEPs for transportation who in fact do not require a monitor. And if, if you have a student who is supposed to get a monitor, that person can't serve like double duty. They're not supposed to be watching me, but then also kind of keeping an eye on the bus. So in the past, it's been kind of carte blanche. I think Dr. Cobb's has kind of reined that in a little bit. And schools can still request and get monitors, but there's a little more of a process than just throwing somebody, you know, on the van to, to go for a ride. It needs to be a little more of an explanation. And I think so far, I can't say I've heard of anybody that's really been complaining about not getting a monitor when it's become a safety issue. I know the superintendent's office has, you know, been right there. Typically, we have monitors on the large buses, those first 10 days of school at the elementary level, third tier, because of the little ones. And we just want to make sure that they get off at the right stop and that there's parents there. And then as the drivers in the big buses, those routes don't tend to change very often. Get a little more familiar with those students. They get used to the routine of the bus. Then we kind of phase them out. But if a principal calls and asks, you know, we've got a lot of problems with behavior on a bus, we've had to pull the bus over, we've had vandalism, that kind of thing, then they'll reach out to the superintendent's office and he can approve, you know, a monitor for maybe a week or 10 days. Couple of schools will get a monitor and have them hop from bus to bus so the students don't know when there's going to be a monitor on the bus. And that's, that's been kind of a nice little behavior thing for them. And, you know, at the end of the day, they're all, especially the little ones, they're all excited, they're going home. You know, we try to get them home as fast as we can, as safe as we can. But sometimes a monitor is, isn't necessary, you know, just to help out in the beginning. Not really monitors for the high school, the big buses, we don't do that. We have the cameras. We have any issues, we pull the video, we send it to the high school, they address it.
Yeah. I just wonder if there's any way that we can try and get more monitors because the bus driver can't really take care of any behaviors.
Oh, that's correct. And there have been instances where folks, parents have been disappointed because stuff has taken place in the bus, the driver hasn't, hasn't seen it. They're really kind of focused on the road. The monitors are wickedly expensive, but if you have 137 vehicles with a monitor in each one in the morning and in the afternoon, or just in the morning, it adds up. So I think they've been pretty, Dr. Cobb's has been pretty clear that if they submit a proposal, again, I don't recall anybody being denied because then typically they'll either CC me or ask me and I'll say, we have to, you know, get it approved from the superintendent. But then once you do that, you know, we'll set it up, so.
Okay. And legally, you can't, the door-to-door students can't be 25, they can't fill that bus.
Oh, no, no. I, I just using that example, those vehicles are much larger, so somebody might see only six or seven students in it. It's simply because it takes a long time.
Yeah.
And it's just not right or fair. We would, I would never dream of doing that.
So usually, it's like six to seven students in those 25?
And I think, you know, we tried to start it off at five, knowing full well that we were going to have the numbers increase. But again, the parents have really been great, as have the schools, because we have done a lot of changes to those vans, simply because of the numbers and then trying to, trying to be accommodating and, you know, trying to make sure everybody gets to school, you know, kind of in a timely, fair fashion, so.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you. Just to piggyback on the door-to-door, knowing that we had that increase, is it, is it fair to say that we need to increase our fleet to, to make sure that, you know, we're providing the?
I'll answer that. Yes. We absolutely do. Could you move us to the more drivers emphatically? Yes.
So do we have a number of, how many more buses or vans do we actually need? Because 88, that's a, that's a huge bump.
So Dr. Cobb's has already asked us to kind of look into that. And I use that example of the 240 students that we currently aren't transporting. Those, by the way, are in lieu of the pre-K students, again, because they're needy or smaller. And if you put, you can do the math fairly quickly, they're not all in the third tier. They're not all into elementary students. So I think that's one of those things where you, you could start saving money by buying additional vehicles. I think you could look at 20 vans very easily and that would mitigate a tremendous amount of the money that you're currently spending with vendors.
So, Dr. Murray, when you say vans, again, we use our culture here, it's the minibus or the vans, but our vendors are actually drive like 12-passenger vans, their actual vans.
Right.
So are you talking about the smaller vans?
Oh, so, yeah, I apologize. The 7D vans are like the Honda Odyssey.
Right, exactly.
Vans that we use kind of slang, I guess, really, is really a microbus. And I think that microbus has multiple utilities in terms of during the day, you can, you can put, we've used a couple of the vans as vehicles that sweep. So that when we have a group of students at a bus stop, for example, in the morning, we have a bus for the Raymond that is very full. And there may be 10 or 12, maybe 15 students now when the weather's gotten colder. We'll send the, one of our microbuses, which can accommodate those numbers readily. They're not the large buses. I think you could also look at a, you know, a third option, which would be one of those 12-passenger kind of van-type vehicles. I think you, you get better, you have better options if you kind of stick with these microbuses. But again, some of that would be driven by budget constraints, you know, what is the significance price-wise between a 12-passenger van? The 7D vans are kind of like the vans you would get at home. It can accommodate five people. You know, you have the captain's chairs and the three in the back. But a lot of those vehicles that are 7D also transport students, again, with some specific issues, ed plans and so forth. And so if you have to put a car seat in it, that limits the space. One of the things that we weren't aware of when the vehicles were purchased is these microbuses can be ordered so that every seat actually has a car seat built in. And we actually have had to buy car seats because of the numbers, because of the vans that were originally purchased. They just weren't aware of that. That's not, again, something that was in the forefront of people's minds and the numbers just didn't exist. So I think you could do some smarter purchasing that would be, allow you to put a few more students in those vehicles because of the way they're, they're constructed. And again, they, they can be used in a number of roles.
So I know we have the, the white minivans, so.
Right. Those are the 7D vans.
Those are 7D. So how many of those do we have again?
We have five of those.
Five?
Yeah, we have three currently operation. We just kind of finished onboarding one driver who will start her orientation tomorrow. And then we have another person that's just got to go through some of the final paperwork, the drug testing, that kind of thing. We're hoping that will be next week. And then all five of those vehicles, sorry, will be on the road. And those drivers are not technically in the Teamsters. And so it is a different rate in terms of what they're, how they're compensated. So it's a little bit of a savings. And really, the original thought with those was to try to absorb some of the really expensive out-of-district placements that in some cases can, you know, be $400 or $500 a day. There are some special cases. So that was kind of the goal of the 570 vans that we currently have. And then, you know, in a perfect world, that's why we bought the used eighth wheelchair van, because wheelchair students are very expensive to transport. This is, it's a little bigger than our microbuses, but not a full-size bus, but it does have room for a wheelchair. So that's our spare, which allows us now to use our seventh wheelchair vehicle that we had ordered, that they had ordered originally, to operate in all three tiers. So that, that was a big, big savings for us.
So what would the ideal number be for the 7D?
Again, you know.
It's too early to tell or it hasn't been?
So we have, I believe we have nine, oh wait, I'm thinking of wheelchair. It would really, depending on how many of these out-of-district placements you really wanted to try to absorb internally. I couldn't give you a specific figure on that right now, but in terms of dollar amounts, I could get that for you, you know, in a couple of days. I'd be happy to send, send it to you. I got some other information with Dr. Cobb's permission. I'll send it to him and he can send out, you know. But I, I think it would be fair to say that you could easily double the number of those 7D vans. And, you know, every time you take one of these very expensive transportation situations and bring it back internally, we're paying $20 an hour for those drivers. So, I mean, if you, if you pay them six hours as their guarantee, you do the math, instead of $400 or $500 bucks, you spend $120. And the vehicles are new, so they're, you know, they're in pretty good shape. We had, we have to equip them. That's one of the things I have in my forecast was that it costs us about $4,000 to equip one of those. That's all the lights, the backup signals, you know, the sounds, those kinds of things. We have, we don't have radios in them because the radios don't go as far as the vehicles go, but we do have a phone, you know, phone just dedicated to that, to that vehicle. You know, the signage and stuff like that. So along with the cost of the vehicle, it's about $4,000. Stickers, just 35 bucks and.
So they, they have the same camera system outside?
We, we actually, they don't have the camera system that the buses have, but we have put our own lipstick camera in so that we have a camera inside the vehicle so that in the event there was any. So that in the event there was any kind of question, questionable behavior or situations like that, we, we have, we have that. It's on a, I think it's a, it'll last thirty days, and then, you know, goes away.
Okay. Another question, when it comes to, two-part. I know we eliminated the private security. So now we have, is it two or three security staff?
So we have, we have one person who works twenty hours a week. It's random, random hours. And it's usually like nine to one or ten to two. We're actually utilizing an older, former police car as a kind of a presence down there. We have some cameras that are installed and some solar lights. And so, we made it very clear, our expectation is for this person to drive around in the lot, come up towards the shop area as well, and just kind of make sure that we don't have people in that, in the lot. We've been very fortunate, when they tore the grandstand down, we ran into some issues for the summer with people who had been dislocated, if you will, for lack of a better term. And we ran into some real issues with that. And so, I, we reached out about trying to have somebody there, just as a deterrent. When they tore the grandstand down, the owner of the property asked us to close that one gate on Forest Avenue that was kind of directly across from the, the grandstand, which really kind of forced us to change the way we set up our parking lots and the bus lot. The result being that it isn't a cut-through anymore, so it's really cut down that traffic in the evening. Cars can't come through the lot and go out that gate. They can't come through the bus lot and come up by the, the offices. So, that, that's been kind of a side benefit to that. But we have been able to kind of stop any of the nonsense with people getting into the buses and, you know, getting out of the rain, that kind of stuff. So we were able to really kind of reduce that expense significantly. And at the same time, as I said, it's random. I, I know at the beginning of the week, when they're gonna be there. The first home football game, we changed things around a little bit, so the person was there a little later. Halloween, there'll be somebody there on Halloween, everybody listening, they know, so. Just so that, you know, as a deterrent. And I, I think we really have been very fortunate in terms of vandali- we haven't really had any vandalism. Uh, we did, early on, purchase some catalytic converters because we were concerned with how open the lot was. So we actually have some catalytic converters in stock, cause we were, we were being told it was forty to sixty days before you could get those. So we have, you know, stuff like, done stuff like that, just to try to make sure if something does happen. But we've really been very fortunate, and especially with the change in the lot, and then having these, somebody down there, it's, it's been good.
I know, but, um, to say, I mean, random, I mean, that doesn't sit well with me.
Well, I say random because I, we, we aren't doing the full thing. I mean, off-camera, I'd be happy to give you details about the schedule.
Okay.
I mean, not that.
Cause I know, I, I.
Not that people are listening.
No, I, I, I know, but I'm just saying that, I know there was, you know, you know, the cost of, you know, having security for it when there was a peer and having the police, and then it went to private, and then.
Right.
It was just like, where's the real cost savings? And, you know, I actually said, you know, we might as well just hire our own staff to do that, it'd be a lot cheaper when you have our own security.
That's what we have, is somebody who, ex-police officer, who's kind of our own thing. But like I said, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
I mean, not that it's, it's, I'm not guarding that.
I know, I know. I mean, we have to protect our assets.
No, I agree. And I think, as I said, I think our big concern was, people, the, unfortunately, you know, people less fortunate than myself, were actually forcibly getting into the vehicles. And weren't really doing anything malicious, but were doing things in there which you and I would not approve of, and which meant we had to sweep the entire vehicle to make sure there wasn't any needle, you know, that kind of stuff. We've stopped that, and I think that is because of this presence, and it really, I think it's worked well. Like I said, I go a little bit too.
Another thing, I, I mean, how are we enforcing our collective bargaining agreement with the union? I know we had, we purchased, was it the sweaters, shirts?
Yeah, so that, that's, that's part of, I think you have other unions in the district as well, I know the custodians, that's part of their agreement. Uh, we were really fortunate, our administrative assistant, Jen Briggs, actually got the same price that we got last year. And, you know, part of their evaluation, which started kind of at the end of last year, but now we went over at our drivers' meeting, is that they have their uniform on, which consists of the sweatshirt or t-shirt, uh, their ID, and then a safety vest. And they all understand that that is part of the evaluation process. And so, when I'm down there in the yard in the mornings, you know, six o'clock, we're reminding people about their vests, about their IDs. If a citizen wants to know who they are, they are employees of the city of Brockton. They are to show their ID, they are to be respectful, and let us deal with whatever comes. But yeah, so, we still have, I guess you could call them some gray areas. The, the, the union, the two union stewards have been pretty cooperative. So has the Teamsters, HR's been helpful. So, you know, we try to avoid grievances and that kind of thing. I think that's the nature of the beast in, in some respects, and, you know, we're, we're, we deal them, you know, one at a time. But I think the labor agreement, it's the first time for everybody. And so, going forward, the, the next contract, you know, the, the drivers will ask us some things, which they're, you know, probably not a terrible thing for the district. And I think the district will have some things which will help management and just smooth the operation. It not reduce the income potential for the drivers, but also stabilize some of the, some of the expenses for the district as well.
So when it comes to the cleanliness of these buses, whose responsibility is that?
Evaluation is that the driver is to maintain the cleanliness of the vehicle. Now, that does not mean it, expected to sanitize and wash the windows every day. But there are, you know, trash is supposed to be tossed out. They all get tra- I have trash bags in my safety vests, I hand them out every day. Uh, but they all have brooms, they understand what that is. Uh, when we have other drivers use other buses for trips, I actually have a clipboard, I will go in on that Monday, and I will check the buses to ensure that they've been picked up. Uh, they're supposed to be returned with no less than a half a tank of fuel, so that somebody doesn't come in to grab their bus Monday morning, or Tuesday morning, as it were today. You don't have a quarter of a tank and have the thing be a mess. So, they're responsible for that. Anytime the technician, Rob, Jay, or I, or anybody gets in a bus and they have a cleanliness issue, it's immediately brought up to the driver's attention. And they're pretty, you know, they're pretty good about, somebody takes a bus, and it's not clean, and they keep it clean, they will let you know, rightly so.
Now, for point of information for the public, now, our bus drivers, our bus fleet are not just servicing just Brockton Public Schools.
Right. Everybody that drives for us is an employee of the Brockton Public Schools. They, they work for us. I don't know what they do on their free time. It's possible that they could drive, you know, on Saturdays for a vendor or somebody like that.
No, what I'm talking about, like, it's our services to the city. Um, you know, the private schools, the.
Oh, yeah. Everybody that drives for us is a Brockton Public Schools employee.
No, like, meaning our transportation department providing services to.
Right, well, we're legally bound to provide transportation to Carl's Spelman, Trinity, New Heights, Norfolk Aggie, yeah.
I understand. Do we have, what's the reimbursement on, on those services to these privates? I know there is none, but, so the public can know that.
I don't believe there is a reimbursement.
There isn't reimbursement.
There is, that's part of our non-net spending. It, it's not reimbursed by the school. If, if they're Brockton residents, we're responsible for.
For their transportation. And that's why we have one bus that goes to Norfolk Aggie, up in Walpole. There's about twenty-seven students on it. And again, that's a regional school that we can't provide, you know, those educational services here. So, we, we don't get any reimbursement for that.
Okay. That's it for now.
Thank you.
Real quick, real quick. Um, I, I, I know I voiced this previous subcommittees. And I, I did, you know, go to the lot in, you know, last school year. Um, I know it's noon, that we're gonna have hiccups, we're gonna have issues with our transportation. But I honestly think that we need to have a, a top-to-bottom audit of our transportation department to make sure that we are staffed adequately, and making sure that the department is, is run properly, that when, where we can save, we can save, so we don't run into any more issues, so. I don't know if we want to take that up now and move that forward, uh, so we can get it approved at the next school committee meeting?
I think that's a great idea. I think what you had, in all candor, was three different expense areas. Your non-net, the city took care of. Your out-of-district, and your McKinney-Vento. And then through, and again, I, I, I've never saw a financial statement in two years.
No.
All of a sudden, they were all lumped together. And when you look, and you have a transportation budget of thirteen million dollars, and people are like, oh my god. You know, that's like a million dollars a bus. But it's really three different budgets. Anytime anybody has taken a vehicle, anytime an athletic team is gone, we have always done a trip ticket, because when it was with first student, they, you paid for getting the kids to school. Anything after that was extra. And that's why this athletic department had a transportation budget. That's why middle school sports had a transportation. I think it would be in everybody's best interest to examine all that, and to find out how that's being accounted for. And then, there are things, like I said, the McKinney-Vento is a term that I, you know, have heard for years, is an underfunded mandate from the state. So, you know, you can calculate from there.
Another, how is it, what's the process? Let's say, for example, somebody wants to rent one of our buses for a field trip that's not associated with the school. So what's the process of them doing that?
Typically, what would happen is they would reach out, reach out to us, a club from Brockton High, or we have some outside entities that knew folks downtown and, and wanted us. I mean, one of them has like seven buses that go, go to a, I think, on the weekends. And what, what happens is, is they will typically reach out to me. And then I'll have the dispatch supervisor, who also does all the booking, we have them fill out with a trip request. And we will give them a quote. And it's a formula that we use. It's, it's the same for everyone. Uh, we don't discount for anybody. It's pretty cut and dried. Uh, we do an in-city rate for our schools, like school, you know, Brockton to Brockton. But after that, it's, it's a rate that's based on a formula, you know, how far away, how long, how long they're gonna be gone, that kind of a thing. And then, we'll send them the, the quote, the proposal, and they can look at it. In some cases, when it was groups here, you know, they would ask for a discount or some kind of support. And I always referred them to the superintendent's office. We're not, I don't do discounts. Um, that's just not my, my thing. And so, that's where those would go. And if they worked it out, and they told us that it was okay, we would go ahead and, and do that. Typically, when people go on a trip, they will have a check or a purchase order for the driver. And then when the drivers return, they have to hand their sheets in, they have to know how they were paid. We would then make a copy of that check, send the check and the trip ticket into the finance office, and then they would apply it to whatever account they used.
So, we had discussed this before the meeting, Dr. Murray. Our whole purpose when we got the busing was to be able to rent these out, and to be able to pay for some of our expenses. So, unless it's in-house, and it's something for our students.
Right.
I think moving forward, we really.
Well, and again, we, and I don't mean to sound flip or anything, it was not my place to decide who would get a discount and who would not. Uh, obviously, the schools, like when they go to the Fuller Art Museum, that, that's a discounted thing. It's our kids doing something. Uh, the parade, the holiday parade. You know, there's an expense associated with that. I mean, I don't think we have to worry so much about the mileage.
Yeah, no, for our students, it's different for in-house.
So, that, that kind of stuff, a- again, that would be something where I would reach out to the superintendent and say, hey, listen, you know, we're gonna need four buses for the band, JROTC, they're just gonna go from the high school down to the War Memorial. And that, you know, that kind of stuff, we're ha- we're happy to do, we want to do. This, this past year, we did the cancer walk. I didn't actually ask anybody. I just, you know, the past, we'd always provide a transportation for the people to walk for the cancer thing. Brockton Hospital had a, they called it a soft opening, they weren't really finished, but they wanted people to come in and see, you know, how things were going. And I think that was, I want to say in August, the beginning of August. And so, we provided transportation for Brockton Hospital. So, there are, you know, some charitable things, obviously, that we're not gonna do, take care of our own, our own students. But at the same time, there was a cost associated with, you know, sending a football team to Andover, the soccer team to Lexington. And, and there's, there was, at least, you know, years ago when I looked at it, there was money set aside in these different departments, you know, to cover those expenses. And obviously, they don't go full retail, because they're our own.
More of it's like, you know, our outside renters, like, let's say, for example, the council or an agent wants to take a trip to.
Right, so what they would do is, they, they would call, and we would give them a quote. And then, you know, they would say, well, is there anything you can do about that? Then I would say, you know, I'm gonna suggest you go speak to somebody in the superintendent's office. Uh, and then they're welcome to, to discount it however, however they want it. But I, I was not, we didn't do that. We, we didn't ourselves say, oh, we'll just do that for free, or we'll just do that for this. I mean, I did in a couple of occasions, I think I might have done.
Oh, because when it, when it comes to, you know, like, facilities, like rentals, I mean, this body here is the one that approves with the, with the, with the prices. I've never seen it to say that.
We use a formula, and again, I, I.
I know, there's a formula that, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming, just off the top of my head, you're responsible for the driver.
Right.
This is, you know, the miles.
We figure out, there's a, a rate for the mileage, like maintenance on the vehicle, the fuel rate. I, I, I think we, we had started off last year at three-seventy-five. We were, you know, had a little, like twenty-five cent cushion on gas. Well, fortunately, it started to go down, but about, you know, two weeks ago, we were right at like three-seventy. So, the formula changes a little bit depending on, you know, cost of fuel, that kind of thing.
So you would have the date of how many outside groups has actually rented? Is there something that's documented that's there?
Vehicles used, goes on a trip, that thing is, there's a report generator. I have a folder in my desk. Uh, I think it was like the last, I want to say, last quarter of last year. And I probably have about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of statements.
So, maybe moving, maybe moving forward, we should work on, like a rental, like we do with facilities? And have, just look at a basic rental?
So, again, I think that, that would be welcomed. I think Dr. Cobb's would welcome that, too, is, we don't really have, we've been very judicious about any kind of rentals that really aren't somehow related to either the city or the schools. Uh, we have, we've done, you know, we did a couple of weddings, but there's some real strict guidelines, no food, no alcohol, you know, that kind of a thing.
I'm just, cause I'm just, you know, curious to see like what that rent, you know, how many rentals we did, and, you know, what the transportation department brought in.
Right.
And where that money went.
Well, I can, I can show you, like I said, I'll, I can give you a figure based off of the slips, how that was reflected in the financial statement. I, I have no idea, because again, I never saw.
You know, it's just, it's more of like, okay, we just brought in X amount of dollars, but we put it right back into transportation. Or we just took all this money.
You know, in some cases, you're creating, so, again, I use the example of football team. I just know Friday, two football team, two buses for the football team, I think it was four for the band, and the cheerleaders in halftime. So, we're obviously, we create the trip ticket, we, we create that bill, if you will. And then we would submit that, and my assumption would have been, whatever was determined was the amount, was then taken from the account that provided for transportation for the athletic department, the music department, whatever. That money was transferred, one was assumed, into transportation. Uh, but again, I never, I, I can't tell you how that was managed. But I could get you that information, then, because.
Well, I know, I know.
information then because we're pretty cautious about like the checks when we've, you know, so let's say the George third grade wants to go on a field trip to the aquarium. We give them a price. They say, okay, their PAC or whatever their fundraising arm raises that money. Then they would give us a check when they come back from their trip. We would submit that paperwork with the check. We keep a photocopy of the check for ourselves and submit that down to the financial office. So I can get that for you. It's gonna take me a little time probably.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Definitely. I mean, I know it's, it's, you know, transportation is new for the district and we, we know we're gonna have hiccups. So we just want to make sure that...
And again, it's really what you want to do going forward in terms of how aggressive you want to be. I, I would be inclined to limit your, your outside stuff simply because of the wear and tear on your vehicles. But we don't, you know, we never really, there was no real policy ever established.
Yeah. So I know we didn't, there was no policy. So I guess, you know, we do have to establish a policy of who we're gonna rent it to and what the criteria is.
What isn't, isn't acceptable. And then that, we just use that and we'll go from there.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we're running over time for our next subcommittee. So I just had just a couple of comments. One is lighting on the lot where the busing is. If you need more lighting.
I think we're good.
We're good.
We have four big lights. Something folks probably don't realize is that Mr. Carney is renting out the infield of the track to some kind of a power company. So they've been doing a lot of work on that infield. He's put some electrical stuff in there. It would not shock me if there are more lights erected. And they have security as well. But we have four pretty powerful lights. We also have the two lights with cameras that we've got. With the way the lot is now configured, I think we're okay. The street provides some lighting. They did create another parking area for us that they're gonna pave tomorrow. So we might have to move one of the lights a little further back over. But I, I think right now, we're, we're pretty good.
Okay. And when we were talking about the vans, the 7D, so I know I've, I've heard from a few people that actually put some of the students into the vans. And they just said it's easier when you have the vans that open on either side, getting the students in and out. So if we can just keep that in mind when we're looking...
Those, those are, the first reason we bought those vehicles was because of the one-way streets. And the law says that the student can't cross the vehicle to get in. And so by having a sliding door on both sides, the vehicle is able, because it's one way to pull over to the left, slide the door open. The one thing that wasn't discussed is they don't have the captain's chairs in the middle row. They had a bench seat, which means they kind of had to crawl over each other. So again, those are some of the things that weren't discussed and, and people, I think, in their zeal to do stuff maybe didn't think of. So, you know, going forward, should we have the ability to order vehicles? I think that's more of a conversation for, for everyone, kind of what, what is your goal? What are you looking to accomplish? Our motivation with the, the first five seventies was to simply try to absorb some of those really expensive auto district trips. And I think we're doing that. So.
Okay. So do we need a, okay, Mr. Rodriguez? I was gonna ask if we needed a motion to move this to the acting superintendent to bring before the committee of a whole to do an audit?
I make a motion to approve the acting superintendent, Dr. Cobb's, to move forward on conducting an audit of the transportation department.
Second.
And now for clarification, does he need to bring that to the committee of a whole? Or can this committee request it from you, Dr. Cobb's?
Committee of the whole.
So the motion is to request the acting superintendent, Dr. Cobb's, to bring a request to do an, an audit of the transportation department before the full committee. And that was your motion?
Yes, that's the motion.
Okay. And it was properly seconded. So motion's been made by Mr. Rodriguez and properly seconded by Mrs. Rivas Mendez. All in favor, show your hands. That's three unanimous?
I think what has to happen is you have to report out your subcommittee to the full committee. And then at that point in time, you take a vote to have me conduct the audit.
We'll do that on the seventeenth. Yep, we'll do that. If we can add that to the agenda on the seventeenth for that potential vote. Okay. And then I believe that was it. Thank you so much, Dr. Murray.
Also.
At the present, absolutely. Thank you.
But before Dr. Murray finishes, I just want to add that I want to thank Dr. Murray personally, because I've known him for a few years. We worked together here at the high school. And Dr. Murray is retiring in February, on the twenty-fourth, I believe it is.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. Who's calling?
Who's counting?
After twenty-four years of service to Brockton Public Schools. So I really thank you for your service and stepping up at this point in time to help get the transportation department online and, and running smoothly. So thank you very much. And I wish you all the best in your retirement. You probably won't see him again before this committee, before he retires. So.
Oh, we're gonna have to make sure we have another meeting before you retire, Dr. Murray.
Don't worry about that.
We're gonna do that for February the sixteenth. Thank you so much.
All right. Any questions? And again, please feel free. I know Mr. Rodriguez has come by, Mr. Cobb, Dr. Cobb's. But come by in seats. It's something behold, it really is.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item, other business. Do we have any other business other than bringing this motion before the full committee on the seventeenth? Nope. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? So motion's been made by Mrs. Rivas Mendez, properly seconded by Mr. Rodriguez, and the motion carries full. Good evening, everybody. Meeting adjourned.
Evening and welcome to the Facility Usage and Planning Subcommittee meeting at the George M. Rahm Little Theater. Today's Tuesday, October tenth. The time is seven forty-five. And we will begin, sorry. In addition to attending, the public can view this meeting via television on Comcast Channel Eight and ten seventy-one HD version and online via the link www.youtube.com/thebrocktonchannels. We'll begin by calling the meeting to order. Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Ms. Asak?
Here.
And I'm here, Jared Homer. Our fourth member, Kathleen Ayers, is not in attendance tonight. She was not able to join us. We've established a quorum. The first item on our agenda was an executive session. We will have to postpone that. We do not have the members present to conduct our discussion. And similarly with item number two was a discussion of an easement for West Elm Street for the Keith Field Access Boys and Girls Club. And we need to make sure we have an opportunity to get updates from the Boys and Girls Club as well. So we will postpone those items one and two to a later meeting of the Facilities Usage and Planning Subcommittee. Item three on the agenda is an update on the Huntington School renovation work. And Dr. Cobb's, would you be able to provide us with an update on where we stand with renovations to the Huntington?
Certainly. Good evening. So at this point, we, we have not actually started any renovation work yet on the Huntington School because we purposely waited until the school year started and to get into October, once everything kind of gets running more or less smoothly, which gave us a lot of time to complete the summer projects and then complete a, a number of open work order at the schools. So I have a meeting set up next week to meet with our architect and Ken Thompson, my facilities director, to go through the building and, and with some ideas of what to do for the, you know, for the sort of remodel. One, obviously, is that there's a major remodel needed for the gymnasium. But the question becomes, and I, I need to have the discussion, we've kind of discussed it somewhat with the cabinet members. And a, a little bit of discussing with the mayor, but we need to decide as a body here, what is going to be the usage for the Huntington School. My suggestion is, you know, we, we use the Huntington School and open it up as a preschool, which we've been trying to do for years and try to figure out what, make that happen. I think it will lend itself well to, for younger students to the building. Because of the building design, it had so many nooks and crannies. It was very much a problem for the older students and for the special needs population, older students there. But it lends itself well to a preschool because those students are always walk to class with it, you know, in a line with their teachers, if you will. So they're always monitored. And the building has, you know, by my count, not using the basement, at least twenty classrooms available to use for pre-K students. And, and working with my cabinet to get some numbers on how many pre-K classrooms right now, we've actually pushed into some of the elementary schools. It's about nineteen classrooms. So, you know, we could use that building and, and do, again, half session, you know, morning and afternoon sessions and accommodate probably five hundred or so students in that building, five hundred and thirty, if I really go with the estimate that I saw. You know, based on, again, two sessions and morning and afternoon sessions, which obviously increases the revenues, you know, for us with those, those students. And, and again, we, it, it may not impact the district so much as far as teachers because we can, I can imagine, we can bring some of those teachers out of the elementary schools now and, and push, put them over into the, the new preschool. That, of course, would require us to, and I recommend, is to keep the therapeutic day school where it is, at the, at the Westgate Drive building. It's a great building for them. It's perfect size for that small school population. It's easy to monitor where the students are. When I did a walk through there with the principal and assistant principal, Megan Bottom and Terry Finnegan, I walked in the classroom. The students are in the classroom. They were engaged. Ms. Otero was doing a great job with the science, with the students. They were in the classroom. They were engaged with the school. And I think that's a great location for them. And, you know, my recommendation, when I'll flesh out further for this body is to take a look at the purchase of the building and as we started to do almost two years ago now. So the Huntington School, yeah, we want to start the renovations and, and we need to do some general cleaning fixing up anyway. New carpet, wall painting, ceiling tiles, new light fixtures. But beyond that, you know, we need to figure out what we're gonna use the school for because that would require us to take a look at the, the bathrooms and, and how we can make additional bathrooms. And certainly for the bathrooms that are already in place, you know, again, renovate them, fix them up, put in the lower toilets for the students, which is not a problem. It would require, you know, some amount of plumbing to do, to put, you know, instead of every classroom, you know, put a, in a cluster area, you know, a classroom for the students where it's, it's like in the middle of the classroom so the teachers could monitor the students in, in the bathroom. So we have not started any renovations yet. We're gonna walk through and take a look, you know, bring again, proposal to this body to take a look at what we, what we could do, what we need to do and, and a cost associated with that in a timeframe, which of course, we know the timeframe is, you know, next September first, basically.
Ms. Asak, please.
Thank you, Dr. Cobb's. So I know we've, we've discussed this in the past on this committee. And I, I thought we were under the impression that, I was under the impression that we were gonna look at the, is it the Shaw School? As far as going to the old Shaw School on, in Ward Five, and we were gonna get the metal building, which would have been less expensive than putting, because wasn't it millions and millions of dollars to renovate the Huntington? And I've been through a few building renovations. And I just feel like we went through the renovation with the Barrett Russell to accommodate the younger students. You need the, the smaller sinks, the smaller toilets, things like that. It would make more sense to keep them the same size they need to be and maybe get step-ups.
That could be an option.
Because that way, if we don't, you know, things change down the road, we can still use it for the older students or still use it for adults. But I would, I would like to see what the numbers are. Because originally, when we heard about the Huntington, it was millions and millions of dollars. And, and it was a, you know, a number that was really out there. And I'm thinking the metal building would have gone up faster, more energy efficient. And I think at the time, we talked about doing two floors. And it was just gonna be a lot less, having the metal building. And you would have the outside space. As far as the Westgate Mall area, I mean, I don't know offhand. I believe it's thirty-five K a month. That just doesn't have the outside space. And I just don't think that that's, I wasn't for it when we, when we voted on it. I just don't see our younger students long-term there.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put the younger students, pre-K, at the Westgate Building. No, it would stay as a therapeutic building as it is right now with the therapeutic students, which is a mix of students. And, yeah, we could look into other things to, for that building to accommodate. We could easily add on a space metal building similar to the one we have over at Summer Street, you know, small gymnasium and, and accommodate those students quite readily, I think. Yeah, the option to demolish, you know, the Shaw Building and, and to, you know, correct, erect a new, you know, steel metal, metal building would be an option. But that would, that's probably two years in the planning and, and construction to do that at least. And obviously appropriation of funds, which, you know, it's gonna run into a few million dollars as well, you know, to erect a building like that. Whereas we already have the Huntington Building. And I think we could certainly look at a less extensive remodel and, and, and building out the school to accommodate the new students with, with, I think, you know, I had to put a number on it, but it wouldn't be millions and millions of dollars. But everything's, everything we do, especially with the supply chain issues and, and construction costs where we have to pay prevailing wage rates, you know, it, it's probably, you know, four or five million anyway to do, to renovate the building. But we have a solid building, you know. It, it has a cafeteria. It has a gymnasium. It has the, you know, the classrooms. It has an elevator. So we own it already. We just put a new roof on it for one point seven million dollars. So it makes sense to renovate it and use it for something that's going to be in the community for a while.
So I know with the new roof and other repairs that we've done with the MSBA, we can't keep it empty. How long do they give you?
It's a school. It would be at the school.
Because they, we had gotten some of the funds. So we, how long do they give you to have that filled with, whether it's administration, administrative staff or students? I know we, we can't leave it empty because of the renovations. I think that was one of the...
Yeah. I don't think there's so much a restriction or a, a window, if you will, of how long it's empty for us to do the remodel as it is. We were not gonna sell it or, or close it down because we just put a brand-new roof on it. I think the timeline is our own. And like, I don't know of any kind of rule that say we, we put a new roof on it, you got a year or two years. But regardless, you know, the plan is to have it open next September.
Okay. Because I know originally, when we, we heard about the remodel for the Huntington, they were talking about, and I don't remember, but I want to say twenty-something thou, uh, twenty-something million or more.
Right.
Or forty-something. It was, it was really up there.
That was a kind of, that was a Cadillac, the total.
Yeah. And I'm thinking, you know, for that kind of money, you can buy a building for a lot less instead of putting that kind of money into a building.
But again, we own this building already. So we're not buying a building. You know, and, you know, I'm looking at, working with, again, the finance team and looking at some of the SIR funds that were allocated. And we're still trying to figure out if they're still available. We had funds that you had voted on for the, the school, you know, modular units for the, with classrooms. And we decided not to do that. That was around five million dollars, you know, a little over five, five point six, somewhere around there.
The, it was seventeen million total.
For the, for the modular trailers?
Because it was supposed to be district.
I just saw a spreadsheet I was looking at with the, with the open architects people. And there was a question, but I saw at least like five or six million dollars that would, that could be possibly reallocated if it hasn't been already reallocated and amended for something else. And we're still looking into that, that, that number. But, you know, I could probably make it work for that. You know, we, we'll do the, all the renovations in-house. And, and the other part of that, that price tag that you had talked about, Joyce, was that we were looking at contracting now, again, the state-of-the-art gymnasium and re-taking down the stage and rebuilding and doing that. We won't do that in this, this time. Well, it's really the, the floors, the walls, new ceilings, the lighting fixtures. And, and again, we can do a lot of that work ourselves in-house, you know. And, and even the demolition, if it's, these days, with a heavy price tag, which we'll, we'll do ourselves. So it's a lot of work in, in a short amount of time. And that's why we waited until, you know, late, later in October to start because, again, we got a lot of work orders out of the way so we can have most of our facility staff working on it.
I do know there's a need for our pre-K. I did get a lot of calls and emails from families because of the pre-K. And I know we've, we've talked about it since I first came on the committee, growing the pre-K, the BRR babies, you know, with the pre-K program. Because there is such a need and to get them into our schools at an early age and then get them, you know, into the Brockton Public School system. It just makes it easier for them to transition into kindergarten and then, you know, first grade. But, you know, if the... But, you know, if the numbers are much lower, I mean, it would make sense.
We will put together a performance for you to take a look at.
I think that school holds over five hundred?
Yes, yeah. It can certainly accommodate a full, you know, again, standalone pre-Ks. So we'll have two pre-K buildings, you know, the Barrett Russell and the Huntington Building, hopefully. The other thing to consider, Joyce, is the, um, yeah, we'll be able to take on additional pre-K students. But right now, we've pushed those students in the classrooms into elementary schools that aren't equipped to be pre-Ks schools, you know.
No, they're spread out, I know.
Changing diapers and, and again, the toilets aren't set up for them. And the teaching staff is not, and the administrative staff is not necessarily equipped to handle pre-K students. So, again, we create the standalone school with the proper staff that's trained. And I think it's going to be a win for this, for the district and a source of revenue for the district.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Do we have enough staff to make sure that we get this renovation done? I mean, it's a very large building. Is it something that we're going to have to hire some contractors to come in to give a hand? Or are we going to tap into Southeastern and use some of those students to come over and work?
We're going to tackle it ourselves, you know. Again, we have, you know, like I've been saying since I was the executive director of operations, I would match our, our facility staff, you know, craftsmen against any, any crew, any construction crew anywhere. They're top-notch, and they're efficient and they know what they're doing. So, it's, you know, it's for us, the expenses will be, more of the expense will be the cost of the materials and rental equipment to use that will do demolition for the gym. But, you know, they're great, they're good, they do a great job, they're professional, and I believe we can get it done in time with a reasonable price tag.
Guess we got to tackle that.
Yeah, the biggest expense again will be materials, you know, the lighting for the gymnasium, you know, the flooring for the gymnasium. You know, we, we may at some point look at, you know, once we get the floor, because we have to rip up the existing floor, get it down to grade and put a new subfloor in, contracting out the actual oak floor, you know, to get that done. But we would finish it ourselves, like we do all the gymnasiums every summer, pretty much.
Okay. And, um, I, I just think that, I mean, the area for the therapeutic day is, we should, you know, look at other options of getting them away from that environment. You know, they, obviously, you know, they need their own space. That's, you know, my, and I didn't vote for it. I think they, I mean, it's, it's doable for what it is. But I think they actually need their own space, school, gym, cafeteria, the whole nine, that they, they actually experience an actual school setup.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you, Tony, but I, I don't think that the Huntington is the right space for them either. The Huntington Building is the right space for them.
Yeah, and I'm not, I mean, suggesting that they go to the Huntington. I mean, like, we have to look at the long-term plan.
I agree.
Getting them out of that, you know, getting them out of that space and making sure they have their own, um, their own building.
And that's definitely something we would have to do before the start of the next school year too, so we can probably add that to a discussion, we can bring that up. Okay, and, Mr. Rodriguez, anything else? Okay, Ms. Asak.
So how many classes do we have at the Barrett Russell?
You know, I have to, I'd have to check on information, but I want to say that I think we have like fifteen classrooms at the Barrett Russell School.
Wouldn't it make more sense to put them all in one school and maybe use?
There's no room for them.
Well, at the Huntington, and then maybe use the Barrett Russell for the therapeutic day?
I don't think we, we would have enough room at the Huntington. Because we already have the pre-K spread out throughout the city.
Right. And the Barrett Russell is full.
Barrett Russell's full, and I don't think the Huntington will accommodate.
Right.
Not enough time to get that?
I don't think, because you're talking at the Barrett Russell, fifteen classrooms is about twenty, twenty-five students.
I think there's a little bit more than fifteen classrooms at the Barrett Russell.
It could be, I don't, off the top of my head, I'm not exactly sure. But I, you know, it's, you know, you're talking three hundred, three, you know, three to four hundred students at the Barrett Russell already, and then another three to four hundred, five hundred at the new Huntington Building. They wouldn't all fit into one building.
Yeah, I just don't.
And your classroom size would start to really get unwieldy at some point.
So, what we currently pay for the Westgate Drive is for the second floor?
We pay for the, for both floors, actually.
Do we have, we have full use of the first floor as well now?
Except for where the, the church is.
That's what I thought, I knew there was still, um...
So, right now, annually at the Westgate, it's about two hundred thousand, two, two hundred and three thousand dollars a year.
Two hundred and three?
So I calculated four hundred and twenty.
Well, that doesn't, that doesn't include the non-net, I mean, the triple net.
The triple net, that's, so that's where I came up with the four twenty with the taxes and everything.
The actual lease is two hundred and three itself.
Okay, but it's really four hundred and twenty with all the taxes and everything, because we have to pay taxes.
With the triple net, the utilities and...
Because we don't own it, so that's why we have to. Okay, I, I personally would like to see the numbers for the renovation of the Huntington, what the numbers would be. And I'd also like to see, I know it's like two years out, but I'd like to see the numbers for an energy-efficient metal building that we can design. It's just going to be state-of-the-art. Because I know we had discussed where the, where the Shaw School is, and there's a good-sized, um, grass area, green space, things like that for our, for our students. So if we can just see the numbers for both?
Sure, we can work up those, uh, cost estimates. And again, you know, it's not, it's not just the, the cost, also, also it's the time factor.
Dr. Cobb, I know you mentioned just the cost of materials for this year for renovations, the lighting, the flooring, painting the walls, possibly step-ups for bathrooms and things and accommodations at the Huntington site. Do we have money in our budget to, to cover those costs in these, in this school year? Things that would have to be completed before September of twenty-two.
Yes, we should, again, most of the labor costs will be covered because we, we're going to pay the craftsmen, you know, all year anyway. You know, we could, we could, again, I could get a cost estimate, you know, like I said, the most expensive things will be the gymnasium, lighting fixtures and, and the flooring. The walls are pretty straightforward, it's sheet rock, and there's nothing special there. Trying to think of the, you know, lighting fixtures for the classrooms, because again, we'll go in and put ceilings and new suspended ceiling and new light fixtures in the classroom. So the major expenses, like I said, will, will be, you know, the gymnasium lighting and those things we could price out and, and probably once we kind of get a go to get started on it, order them now. So we'll, we'll, we'll be installing them probably in the spring, but we can, we can start doing the work with it now.
Okay, and then would there any, would there be any other, any other requirements for that age population in the Huntington in terms of bathroom accommodations, things like that? Is there any like set or specified limit or requirements of how, like a minimum number of bathroom spaces available?
That I could find out when we walk through with the architects. You know, Angelo, he does a pretty good job of, you know, doing the, his estimates based on what the requirements are for the state and federal requirements. Other things that we'll, you know, take a look at is, is, you know, the walls, you know, especially the lower walls, and maybe coat them for the students, you know, and, and some of the doors that need to be maybe changed out.
Yeah, and I think one of the only other things we had talked about previously this year was just little legs and preschool kids going up and downstairs to get to the second floor and things like that. So maybe like railings and obviously just adjusting height for things like that for kids.
Yeah, we have the railings, and obviously there's the elevator again for any, any special needs, handicap needs.
But beyond that, the building, I mean, it's ADA, it meets all ADA requirements, things like that, so it's...
It meets the requirements, it's a school.
Almost ready to go.
It's always been a school, it's been an elementary school forever, you know.
Yeah, okay, that's great. Any other members, anybody have any questions on item three? Yes, Ms. Asak?
It's okay, just to, um, when it comes to, it's probably less expensive to try to adjust our students to the toilets and the sinks rather than to have to replace and bring in, because at home, they're using regular-sized toilets and sinks.
True, that's a good point.
It might be, or, and, you know, we can find, so I think if we can adjust things to our, for our students, might be less expensive as well than rather having to redo plumbing, to, you know, smaller sinks, you're going to have to reroute things. We might just be able to save a little bit on the expenses if we can adjust them.
You did give it a facelift and replaced the fixtures as needed, then, then...
And just do the, the step-ups. You, you see the two steps, a step-up, there's a sink. At home, they use regular-sized sinks and, and we can probably throw in some smaller ones to help some of the teachers and staff if some students are having a tough time. But I think that would, that would just help with the expenses.
Definitely save costs, you know, because those are very specialized plumbing fixtures instead of buying standard, you know...
Just buy the standard, because that way it'll always be there, you know, if we have to just, you have the step-ups, and I've seen them, I've gone to the Barrett Russell, and they're adorable. They're the small sinks, the small toilets, but that only accommodates the younger students. Where if the Huntington, we can adjust it so our students are able to use them. We can save, maybe apply the money that we save somewhere else with more updating, but, you know...
Yeah, the way the Huntington is configured, I'm not sure if you, you walked through there, I think Tony walked through it, I just have to walk through the, every classroom, in between the classrooms, there's a small sink area that, you know, we, we looked at maybe, we, at one point, the price that you had was to convert all of them into smaller bathrooms. Like I said, we can probably do that to one classroom in a cluster area, so they can, they can use that for the students that go to the bathroom. But, and then take those areas that, and convert those into like changing spaces for the young students. So, you know, I think, again, the space lends itself well to, to make it in a preschool with not very expensive renovations.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions on item three? Okay, moving on, item number four is an update on the rental space and the storage space for surplus goods. I think we, we had started a conversation about this at one of our last meetings. And I just thought maybe we could talk a little bit about what would we need to do, what would need to happen for the process of getting an inventory complete of what we have. And then, second to that, putting those items, surplus items out for bid so that we can begin to clear out space that, things that we're storing, that we're paying to store right now.
Yeah, we're paying a lot of money to store things that we're not going to use. Doesn't make any sense. So, you know, I guess your question, have you been there, Jared, to see the, the actual, all the books? And again, Joyce has and Tony has, there's, I didn't realize we put all that stuff over there, but we had to move it out of the other schools, like the libraries to do renovations and create classrooms out of the libraries at East and West. So, there are a lot of books and a lot of things there that we'll never use, and we have to figure out, again, if you want a detailed inventory or are we just going to, what the process will be to donate them, so that's the question.
Thank you, I actually spoke with you recently regarding this. So as far as the Perkins Warehouse, I mean, the space, there's a lot of space, but I just don't agree with having to pay to lease a, a building with stuff we're going to, we're going to be donating. So, I know in the past, we've talked about different organizations, you know, opening it up. You know, is it something that, to take an inventory, we just don't have the time, they don't, and I can't see facilities, but I mean, if we just go there or designate a member to go there with, with a facilities member and just, maybe we can take an inventory, take, this is what, this is what we're deemed, this is going to be donated. And then, maybe have them get a container, fill the container there, and then take the container to, you know, whichever country they're shipping it to. Because for our facilities department to pack up the stuff and then take it and deliver it, first of all, we don't have the manpower, we're taking them away from our, from BPS, things that we need in our buildings. And the other thing is, is the expense of taking our facilities department to pack it up and, and get it to the locations. So, I was under the assumption whichever organization's able to step up and say, yes, we can use this, they'll help getting the materials out of there. The sooner we get it out, we can make room for more storage, we can condense things, get things out to some of the schools. It's just, we're paying to lease items that we, same with like, you know, pre-buying. Pre-buying's great because we might save money, but we're also leasing a property to store stuff that we pre-bought to save money on. So again, it's just, you know, if we can't put them in our schools, and it's, it's good to have a little bit of a reserve, but if we're paying hundreds of thousands in storage and metal containers and things like that, we need to really look at what we're paying to store stuff. And, you know, we've been storing them, so I just think to expedite things a little bit because we need to make room for other items. And if we can get some stuff off that floor, it might be less for us, you know, to, to rent it. If we can remove stuff from that third floor and condense it to the second floor and the first floor, we can save a little bit of money until we figure out what we're doing.
I agree, I actually, last week, I actually, when we had the last school committee meeting, Tobias had, when we, again, we cleared out some of the other schools, we did a donation with a couple of organizations that came and picked up the books and donated. So, I directed them actually to start looking out to those people, reaching out to those people and, and start the donation process. Because, again, we, you're right, the manpower to, to inventory all those things and pack them and stack them and do whatever else, it's tremendous. And, like I said, hopefully, I'm using the custodians and craftsmen to start the Huntington, not, not count books. That's not what we hired them for, we pay them a lot of money to count books.
So can we as a body designate someone to work with facilities to either itemize this for the committee? And we had approved, you know, to, do we put this out there for the different organizations and have them submit a request? And it, it's not one of those, I can get it in January, February. First come, first served, who can get this out of, out of our storage area? And then, as, as things come along throughout the year, we can reach out to other organizations, but we just can't keep paying to lease items we're going to donate. And it's not a small amount of money that we're paying, we're paying a lot of money to store stuff we're donating that can go towards something else. Thank you.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
So, um, everything that we have on that third floor, I know there was some stuff that were on pallets that were, I don't want to say overpurchased, but could still possibly be used within the district itself. So, wouldn't it be prudent if we were to take our, our principals across the district to walk that third floor prior to us deeming any of this stuff surplus to see if they would need any of this stuff? Because I could just say, if, you know, depending upon what the school that I'm in charge of, there's probably some stuff there that they could probably use because maybe this, this school didn't want to use this stuff and it's not good for them, but it's good for the other schools. So I would, you know, if we can coordinate to make sure we can get, you know, district-wide and have our administrators walk there and see what's in there, what they can need, you know, what they need or something that could be useful to them. You know, for example, I've seen some of the weight equipment, gym equipment that was in there. And I know one of our staff members, the coach at West Wells, he, he runs a program with the gym, that could be useful for, you know, West Junior High or any of the schools with some of those weights that are up there and a lot of the other items. So, if we can do that first, have some of the administrators walk through that warehouse and see what they, I'm pretty sure they see some things that they could be useful for them in their, in their buildings.
Certainly. The, the other thing to consider is, again, if we're, depending on what we decide to do with the Huntington School, there's, there's a lot of the smaller desks and chairs that we will go into the Huntington once we finish the remodel. So, and, and I think, again, depending on what this body, you know, full school committee decides to do, there are other desks and chairs for, for older students as well, so. A lot of that, hopefully by, again, by the spring, you know, we, we start to, you know, well, it'll probably be spring, probably in the summer when we actually start to, you know, put classrooms, you know, set up classrooms for the, for the Huntington School.
So are those, because I know there was a, a large number of brand-new desks, which is, where are we with circulating that or we still didn't get there? I know, I know we had some staffing issues of actually moving a lot of stuff, and we still do, but has that even moved yet or are we still assessing?
With you, some of them, again, because we had to set up the classrooms with the pre-K in the, in the existing elementary school, so we moved some of that furniture into those classrooms. But there's still a lot of furniture there. But there's still a lot of furniture there, but we will, whatever we decide to do with the Huntington, we'll probably use a lot of that new furniture when we remodel the Huntington.
I was going to say, I think to Mr. Rodriguez's point too, if we, if we couldn't even, if we couldn't get the administrators there, if we could at least produce a catalog for them. Of of what is available and make that available to all the administrators so that they could look at it and and put in a request for some of those items, that would probably be. Whatever's the fastest way we could get that done, maybe that's something.
Or we could, you know, the administrators or the the senior custodians for the building, they could certainly.
Yeah, principal or designated.
The emissaries for their administration.
Sure, okay. Ms. Asak.
So Dr. Cobbs, you touched base on the, on the desks, because I was going to mention that and I know when I had asked, they said a lot of the schools. Because of COVID, started using the tables and um, so we still have a lot of the brand new desks. If we're going to use them for the pre-K, we have them already. I mean, the way they have them set up takes up a lot of room. I'm sure if we got proper shelving in there or something, we can, we can consolidate so much. Just to, just to clear out that third floor.
Right.
Will be a hu, will be a money saver. Um, and then I agree with Mr. Rodriguez. Let's just put it out there to our, put it, put it out there to our BPS staff, our our principals and and custodians. Have them just go there before we give something out. I mean, there, there's a lot of, I saw some science, um, science kits. There's a lot of things that were there. You know, it might be, they're using a different curriculum now or they're using different books, but they might be able to find them useful or find. Find it useful for someone within the community to get them. Um, so I think the sooner we get get them in there, it's just faster. Because we've been, we've been talking about this for a little bit now and if we can just get this done before the end of the year.
Yeah, I agree. I think if we can at least, yeah, get in there, get that catalog of what's available, offer that out to the faculty, to the, to the different schools. But maybe that's the other thing to consider too, is we, we want to move it, we want to get it out and can those receiving schools, like if it was gym equipment or something. Can, do they have a place they can put it now? Can we start to move that process? Can, can that happen between now and the end of the school year in June so that? The faster we can consolidate at Perkins, that, yeah, if it would save us money, it's worth doing that.
And if everything goes well and we end up using the Huntington, we could probably find a room down in the basement to store some of that stuff.
Well, that, you know, I get, that's a good point, because when I counted the classrooms for the Huntington, I did not count the basement classrooms that, you know, we, again, with right now. I think we're using two, two of them for the, yeah, repair depot for the computers, for IT. No reason to move them if we can, we don't need to use the basement for students, uh, you know, we use the basement, the cafeteria and the kitchen is in the basement, but it's.
And my donation center is in the basement. The donations, my cradles to crayons.
Yeah, I know, and you're in the basement as well, but but there's still, there's still four. Maybe six other classrooms in the basement at Huntington that could be used for whatever, storage or or anything else.
It's, it's a great space for storage and I even have room in the back, um, so definitely.
Ample access to that basin with the ramp that goes downstairs and so it's easily accessible. So again, the classrooms I counted were on the, on the first and second floor.
And a lot of the containers that we have, do we own those or do we rent them? The metal containers.
We, well, we, both. We actually, we own a lot of our own, our storage containers. We, we purchased a few uh, prior to the pandemic, but then we. When the pandemic hit, we had to move furniture out quickly to change it up, so we, we, we leased some of them. We're spending the process for the last two years of emptying them and and turning them back in, so I think we still leased about twelve of them.
Do you know offhand what, what our lease is? I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you have a ballpark idea?
Um, I, I don't remember. It's been a while.
Because again.
Put my deputy hat back on.
It's okay, it's just that we're leasing, we're leasing to store and I know, I know some items. They're, they're not the um, most practical way of storing things because.
We're trying to phase them out.
Temperatures.
Turn them in, you know, it, it's a slow process to. You know, sometimes when people store things, they, they want to hold on to them just because, you know, and so, and a lot of them where they're. Again, the six foot tables that we had two or three students at and and if you ever been to a school in the summertime when the tables are turned upside down. Gum stuck to them, like, yeah, so it better to put a lot of them in the dumpster, but it, it's hard to get some of the staff, you know. To get rid of them, yeah, but that's, yeah, they really probably shouldn't go back into the schools.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, any other questions on item number four? Okay, item agenda, uh, next item, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Actually, do we need a motion to remove item number one and number two to a different date to postpone it? We're removing it from the agenda?
So I wasn't sure if we needed to select a date for that too, so.
Or just to remove it and have it reschedule a little later date?
Okay, yeah.
Future date where we select.
Okay, so then, um, right, so in in, in terms of um, taking those items out of order, I apologize for taking those items out of order on the agenda, so. Agenda item one was initially listed as to go into executive session. To consider the requests in the Boys and Girls Club for access and utility easement in connection with potential purchase of a portion of property. Located at or around Key Field and the value of such property and or requested easement. We don't have our attorney with us or um, membership representatives from Boys and Girls Club to have that discussion tonight. Could I get a motion to uh, move that agenda item to a future date to be determined by members of the subcommittee?
Motion to um, reschedule to a later date, item number one on the agenda as stated.
And can I get a second?
Second, it's one and two.
Yeah, we're going to.
I didn't know we had to do them separately, okay. So item number one, um, motion was made by Ms. Asak and seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. And can we get a vote, choirs? All in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. And then item two on the agenda reads, um, discussion of requested easement at West Elm Street for Key Field site access to Boys and Girls Club proposed development. So again, we would need a motion to reschedule that and um, we should try and select a date in the coming weeks when we could. Get together and and do that and invite members of Boys and Girls Club to present that information to us and have that. So can we get a motion to reschedule?
Motion to reschedule item number two as stated.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. So motion properly made by Ms. Asak and seconded by Mr. Rodriguez, all in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous as well. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is other business. Um, do any members of the subcommittee have other business? Ms. Asak, please.
I know um, we've attempted to start looking at our rental, um. Our rental fees and it's just, it, it's crazy how fast time's going by, so we definitely need to. At least start discussions on that, at least by the next meeting. Um, I believe, Dr. Cobbs, you emailed us, the application and some of the fees and stuff.
Correct.
Because I know we, we really need to look at that, especially with the cost of energy between the, the heating, the buildings, the electricity, water, things like, well. The heating and the electricity, um, to just make sure we're competitive. We don't, you know, we're renting out our, our buildings and stuff, but we just don't want to be losing money. It's costing us money to rent them out with our custodial fees and and the cost of.
I don't, honestly, I don't think uh, the, the, the cost of the utilities are built in, you know, we, we do try to recoup the. Cost for the custodians and if necessary, school police, um, for any events, but if you really start adding in the utilities. It would change significantly the, the rental fees.
It's just, it might not. I know I've come up to the high school, I've gone to other schools, whether it's during the week, at night, during, you know. Or weekends and I've seen some of our schools in use, but if it's costing us money, we really need to look at. If we're losing money, it just, it's, it's not going to benefit us if it's costing us money to rent out our schools. Or maybe we can just condense it and only allow certain schools, because there's other events already going on there, then um. You know, we can just add other events rather than have, you know, have it spread out throughout, throughout the district. But uh, I definitely think that we really need to look at our, our pricing as far as what our rentals are, so. And I wouldn't mind, you know, just taking a look at that and then maybe having that for our next meeting to start discussion on that. Especially where the committee is going to be changing come January, so at least get something started.
Make sure that's on the agenda, yeah. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, I mean, just to piggyback off Joyce's, um, our utility cost obviously uh, increases, maybe. You know, the rentals um, has a impact on that, obviously, because they are using um, some of that. But you know, if we could actually, um, I mean, it's going to be a long, I, I have a, quite a few items here. Um, I would like to, you know, if we could schedule this for our next coming facilities meeting to um, get an update on the Gaudet School. Um, as well. I know we're using that as a community center, um, to see what the cost is, um, with the rentals there. There are groups that are utilizing that space that provide tremendous service to the city. But we need to make sure that um, we're not being bombarded by uh, letting them use that space. And we could be using that for one of our programs. Um, also, if we can get a, an update on the bus depot. Um, I know we're uh, I'm trying to, you know, moving forward on that initiative. And um, also, I know we spoke about. Um, I had brought to light the city ordinance regarding uh, with the Parks Department, where the Brockton School Committee is. The um, overseer of certain parcels, um, but we still have the Parks Department permitting our fields. Um, which is against our city ordinance, so I know that um. Superintendent Thomas was supposed to uh, move that um, forward, if we can get an update on that. Maybe have a discussion with the Parks Commission and Mr. Tim Carpenter as well and then um. The turf fields, I know we had some um, engineering work on turfing uh, with track surface with the four middle schools. And the Davis, if we could um, get that representative on board and um, so we could take a vote on it. I know there was, there was money allocated, um, so we have to get a move on at least addressing that. You know, for our students. And lastly, um, I would like to get uh, an update. Um, on our contract with the Brockton Rocks organization of utilizing, the Brockton Rocks. Utilizing the high school as parking and what that contract entails. Uh, with the BPS, um. So that's about it.
So the contract with the Brockton Rocks.
Yeah, so I know. When the Brockton Rocks first originated, there was a contract with them utilizing Brockton, you know, Brockton High as source of parking and. You know, what the fee was and what they paid to the district. Um, I know they've kind, you know, went to the Colgate League, but now that they do. Are going back into that minor league aspect, so um, they will be, and you know, obviously, anybody that goes there, they're, they're, they're parking here, so. What's the contract? What are they paying us or is it something that BPS is going to control? Because it has to, this body has to um, oversee that, so.
Okay.
I, I would echo Mr. Rodriguez's point about, uh, the third point about the bus depot status as well. I think we had also, um. I think the point had been raised too about the feasibility, maybe dispersing buses throughout the city in, in smaller numbers and like maybe like the campus. Uh, the compass schools, um, the middle schools, just to get them maybe in closer proximity to their roots. I know the question came up too about, well, what would you do with the dispatch or the, the staff and the office staff that are at the fairgrounds and. Maybe we could consider, we could talk about whether or not there's another place that they could work out of. Where they could have telephone communication with those different sites, what that would mean if that's a, if that's a feasible option. I know other towns that have their own buses do that because they have smaller numbers, smaller fleets and things, but I know they keep them and store them at. School sites, um, in the after school hours and things. Just, we would have to look at, obviously, the logistics of parking and. And where we could fit buses and things like that, but that might also help to alleviate some of the costs associated with continuing to store buses at. At uh, the fairgrounds across the street, so.
Question I have with that is, you know, the, the operation of it, when, if you spread them out. Now, we only have, was it two supervisors? How is that going to be? You know, because they do have to do the safety checks and that, the buses all in a line, you have them all spread out through the city, so how do they? Is that even possible? Are we gonna?
It will increase the cost. Um, we, we, when we started the transportation department, Aldo and I, we, we hired a supervisor and. And gave him a, a vehicle to, to, that, that hit what part of his, the major part of his job was to start the buses in the morning. Make sure that everybody's ready and out the yard on time. And with, with satellite locations for buses, you, you're going to need more than one supervisor, so you're going to have a salary increase. You know, corresponding salary increase and benefits in another vehicle and and um. If it's four compass schools or if it's more, and you know, the idea was to co-locate them close to where they, the routes are. You know, where they mostly do their routes, but again, with, with three tiers, a lot of them are all over the city anyway, so. I'm not sure how much of a savings we'd realize by having them disperse, you know, satellite locations across the city, but we can certainly take a look at it. But there will be a corresponding increase in staffing to, to match, you know, again, to get out and and vehicle purchase.
And they have the, uh, what is it? The snow mo, is that?
Yeah, the snow, snow, snow brush, we call it, the brush at the top.
So it's just like.
You need one of these location now.
So now you're going to have, so how much does that cost?
And you, and you have to.
And the security.
Wire it and set it up, so yeah, there's the associated cost that.
Yeah.
You know, to, you know, everything's certainly on the table, but there will be associated costs with that.
Yeah, I think we, and even if you couldn't do it with four different locations or three or something like that, I mean, I don't know if that's worth. Doing a cost estimate of if you had, what would you save if you didn't pay it out to um, the fairgrounds or I know another. I, I think it was a, a community member who spoke had asked about why we don't store them at the high school and, and all the parking lots around here. Considering it would, I, I think the assumption would be they'd already be out on their routes before the students are arriving and the fact they arrive in to park too, but.
And there's also associated security costs.
Yes, exactly.
Police.
Right, keeping them.
Staff parking, so you're looking at what, a hundred and sixty vehicles that's going to be here on top? And then when they come back, where are they parking? Because now you have staff and students that are here, so when they return, there's no place to.
Right, some, some of the schools, you know, wouldn't lend themselves well to, because of the size of the parking lot, like east is, is really no place to put them. West, you get a little more room, um, south, yeah, not so much, um, north. Not so much either, you know, we have to look at some of the, you know, a good location with a large parking lot would be, be uh, Brookfield, for example.
It's tiny.
Ashfield, but there's, again, they're, they're way, you know, kind of remote, remote locations, so. You know, the feasibility, you know, we could certainly look at it and, and put together a feasibility study for.
So the Shaw schools. Would that be too, now that'd be too small.
I'm sorry?
The Shaw, because in the.
Shaw.
Shaw School on Quincy, would that be a, a ideal location, like a temporary or?
They don't have much of a parking lot there at the Shaw School.
Yeah, you would have to grade it.
Yeah, it's right in the middle of a pretty busy area, you know, down at, at intersection at the Shaw School, it's crazy anytime.
Maybe with lower enrollment at the high school too, if you don't have as many students driving to school or something, you might have those available spots for the drivers. The hundred and sixty extra spaces for the driver's vehicles or something, they might be able to find the spots if they moved it here. Sorry, Ms. Asak.
It's okay. Um, so actually, Mr. Rodriguez touched base on one of the segments I was going to make, so. Sometimes people will mention things, we've already addressed this, we've already asked, the body has already asked about parking at the high school. And not only will you have your buses, you'll also have vehicles for the drivers. We just don't have the space and I know it was mentioned at our last full school committee meeting, that potentially the high school, but I know a few of us have already. Brought that question up more than once to try to figure out how we can save money as far as like a location. One option was to, okay, if you park the buses at the high school and you can make, make it work, then maybe find a small location for. Maybe shuttle the drivers over um, to the lot, that way they're being shuttled and you, you have a shuttle back and forth. Uh, a few times a day, so it's, it's not going to be an easy fix unless we really find the space.
We need to find a transportation depot, period.
And to be able to find the location.
We, this body actually wanted to put that question forward to the city council to, because it really is, you know. As you know, the city acquires their property, not the school department, we, and there has to be some sort of resolution from this body, I think. To the school, the city council to move forward on it, yeah.
So I mean, I.
We, I know we looked at a property, which I won't discuss it, you know, obviously in an open session, but uh. I'm not sure what has been done on anything's been moving on that yet. It, it's been mentioned, but you know, I don't think there's been any real push to, to. To come to a resolution on that.
I mean, again, we, we do have areas. I mean, again, we, we do have areas not too far from the school that do have a lot of parking, um, vacant areas. But again, it's, it's, a lot of times people will ask and we're like, we've already asked. Same with the solar panels. We've asked about solar panels for years and it's why can't we add solar panels to help with some of the energy costs, um, especially at the Downey School where that's all electric. Actually, do we have an update on the Downey? I, I know that they were trying to convert to get away from the electric heat, um, and things like that.
Yeah, I can give you a quick update on that. Um, it, it's, you know, we're, we're probably, I should say, eighty to ninety percent through the engineering for the, for the project, um, we're, we're at the point where, you know, I've approved a lot of submittals for the new unit ventilators, for the rooftop units, um. We, we, right now, we're, it's, it's, um, in the pre-bid stage for the electrical contractors and, and the mechanical contractors, so they're, they're actually doing their walkthroughs right now to, so they can bid on the project. We're, we're about to put in the order, I think, soon for, to purchase unit ventilators and the rooftop units. So we'll expect them, mo- the majority of the work will be done this summer. We're actually gonna take the building offline for the summer to, you know, get the, the most of the work done, so. So, you know, with the feasibility and with the study, you know, it, it was, we looked at going to converting to natural gas and we looked at the cost and, and there's no natural gas actually in that area other than maybe where the Shaw's and Home Depot is, so. And so the pipeline is down where the master storage campus is further down, uh, so. It, it wasn't feasible, it wasn't really a cost saving when you compare the cost of the energy, so. We, we, the, the better aspect of the project was to go to more energy efficient electricity throughout the building. With not just the new unit ventilators and the rooftop units, but also the lighting fixtures, the, the transformers that are inside the building, the, the energy, you know, occupancy sensors. Pretty much everything electric will be changed out and upgraded to more energy efficient, so that we'll be realizing the savings. We, we looked at, we had actually submitted a proposal for a, a grant, um, for the second phase of the product, which, which would have been to install a, a major solar installation on the roof of the building, um, and, and getting more energy efficient upgrades, so. We did, we're not successful with that, that grant, we'll submit it again, but, uh, so, but that can be done in the next phase. We can get all the, the new upgrades installed and then do the energy efficiency, um, installations later.
So when, when we don't get the grants, they, they break down why we didn't get it?
Yeah, this, this was, this was, we, we had a lot of people, a lot of experts help us write the grant, you know, with the Ameresco people and, and they brought in experts and, and we, it was really comprehensive and we had the, we went through several phases of writing and submission, submittals and they gave us feedback. It's like, you know, you're, you're a student in high school, you write a paper and you come, it comes back with a red D on it, you know, so it was, it was not fun. And we did a lot of work and, 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 you know, our grant writing team worked hard, but at the end, you know, we still wanted them to give us what happened, why, what can we do better next time? So we will submit it again and we will follow up with that, that, uh, for the next phase and that'll, that will either offset or pretty, get us pretty close to net zero for the building as far as energy use and, and energy, you know, monies recoup for the, uh, solar array.
I mean, that, that's, um, I just know from everything I've been hearing on the news and stuff, I mean, hopefully they're not accurate, but I'm hearing that we're gonna have a really tough winter and usually, I know the past couple of years we were able to save on the energy costs and if we're gonna have a tough winter, that's gonna hurt us.
Interestingly, uh, uh, again, I just signed last week, uh, you know, all the invoices for the electricity bills for every school and, and interestingly enough, that, that wasn't the most expensive school. It was the Huntington Building, actually. It's seventy thousand dollars for the Huntington building, it was ten, ten thousand dollars for the Gaudet Building, so there's, so there's.
So we're paying ten thousand dollars for the.
Yeah, who would think, but yeah, it, um.
Again, we need to just really look at all, all our buildings and what our expenses are and, um.
So, did I like to, it was ten K just for the month or is this?
For the month.
For the Gaudet.
For the Gaudet.
And I know, I know residential, um, you can reach out to the state and they come out to an energy assessment. Do they have anything for our buildings that we can reach out and have them come out, check the blown in insulation or, or, you know, energy efficient light bulbs and is there any program that we can look into? I mean, I can try reaching out to the state and see if there's anything they can come out and do an energy assessment?
Not sure if they'll do it for free, cause it, it's, it's a little bit different going through a, a large building like a school building that is a residential location. Um, probably the answer to the question is, cause, and that, again, that's what we did with the Ameresco Group to, to, we had a thorough, you know, review of the, the Downey Building and its energy use and, in fact, it will, it will require some electrical upgrades that's part of the, the project. That, that's what we put into the package, uh, for the next time, but. Certainly we can look and look into that for each building, but it, you know, there may be an associated cost with it. You know, you, you, again, if you, let's just throw a number out, say it costs us five or ten thousand dollars for the assessment and, and we, then, then they will, not sure, like at home, they're not gonna give you free light bulbs and, but there are energy programs that we have used and they do give us a light fixture and they, and they install them, so. You know, we've done that in several schools, so, uh, you know, there, there is that, you know, we can, you know, I, I think we've, we've done a few of them already. I know we replaced light fixtures in quite a few of the buildings and they were, they supplied them and the contractors to do it, but, but there's a cost, you know.
Yeah, definitely when, when you're dealing, um, you know, with schools and stuff. My, my last question is, is I do get a lot of calls, um, a few calls throughout the year, um, and, and I always tell them, sometimes they drive by and they're like, okay, all the lights are on at the school and it's like eleven o'clock at night, and I'm like, okay, but we have custodians there. Do we, I know when I've worked at some real estate companies, they set, they can, they can control the heating system, the temperature of the heat, um, lights, sensor lights? So they come on when someone's walking, um, rather than all of them stay on all night long?
We've done that in quite a few schools and we've done a, a lot of that through the Brockton High School, which obviously the, the largest building, that the, the classrooms have full light sensors and, and cafeterias we've converted, the light fixtures and they have sensors and so, uh, so, yeah, we've, we've done that in a number of, of the schools already.
Okay, cause I always tell them, I'm like, there's custodians there working late at night, but they're like, oh, the whole school's lit. And I'm like, well.
Yeah, they, they shut off eventually.
Okay. So thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Rodriguez?
I know in, now we get our, um, MUNIS updates with, um, Mr. Clarkson. Can we add that with our utility cost to, to that report on a, you know, I know it's on a monthly basis, but I would like to see it, a breakdown, um, per school and, you know, the properties that we do lease, you know, with the actual cost we're paying, um, per month.
Certainly.
Thank you. Cause I know we see the overall, this is what we budgeted for, this is what we have left, but it'll be, you know, I would like to see it, this is what we're paying for the Davis, this is what we're paying for North or South, that, you know, where we, what months are we, uh, actually spending more and why?
Yeah, that would definitely help if we were looking at this rental stuff.
What, what do you wanna see? The electrical, the, uh, gas?
Yes. All utility bills.
And obviously water storage, you know, we, we pay for water storage.
Yeah.
Again, that, that helps when we're looking at what we're renting.
Rental fees, yeah.
A lot of times we're renting our facility and sometimes it's cheaper for someone to rent our facility than to have them go out and lease a property. Um, so a lot of times it's just, if it's costing us more money, we need to, you know, we have budget issues, we need to really like look at everything and, um, make better decisions when it comes to renting our facilities, um, especially if it's something that's gonna be a repeat renter. Um, and I know we had asked for a list of those that rent on a regular basis. I know we had asked for a list of that.
Probably the, the largest usage for, for rentals for our facility is, is from Brockton Public Schools. You know, our aft- after school programs, the community schools programs, and, you know, the, like Brockton High School, it's, it's, it's never not used pretty much, but it, a lot of it is used by community schools with the classrooms and, and driver training and different things, so. So there's, there's really probably like six schools that are used the most and obviously this building, it, it has the most usage of all of them. But I, I think, do you get those reports from Zalinda when she sends them out with the facility usage reports?
No, we should though.
I, I will make sure she includes you on those, those reports that come out.
I mean, it's, it's when you look at the, um, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, Mr. Rodriguez.
When, um, like, but, you know, I, I rent, you know, Montiano Stadium for years. It's, this is what the fee is for, um, like the house manager, the custodial staff, if you have a detail officer, if they show up or not, and then you have the rental for the field, but we're using the lights. So is there, um, was that like snowballed into that price? I don't know, or do we add a utility fee, uh, a set amount? Like how do you, um, determine what the utility fee is? Because, you know, you got the lights on, but then somebody's going to the bathroom, flushing the toilet and they waste them all. So it's just like, how do you come up with the magic number?
Probably take an, an average of the, you know, the daily fee and probably break it down to an hourly cost, I'd imagine for you. But if you, it's probably not that hard, once you get the, the total number for, on the facilities, uses the utilities and, you know, you could break each one down to an hourly fee, I'm sure, but it'd probably be quite costly. But you get to an hourly fee that most people probably won't wanna pay or, or, you know, organizations can't afford.
It's, it's more of like us absorbing the cost, I mean, you know, just.
At least you know what it's costing, your true cost.
You know, for, for example, it's just like, listen, there's a seventy-five dollar fee for utilities or a hundred and fifty, like something, at least we know we're not taking the brunt that we're getting something, um, that's dedicated to that and where that fee that's allocated to that rental is going towards, um, our account that addresses our utilities to, you know, at least, you know, try to put a dent in there.
Were you, sorry, Mr. Rodriguez, I'm just, I'm gonna say a sec, were you looking for a specific timeline for those, um, the rental contracts and things? Were you looking for like the twenty-two, twenty-three school year? You wanted to do like a one-year review or were you just looking for like the la- the most recent quarter from?
I would just, um, I would like to just see the twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay.
For what we have right now, um, to just get an idea and if that's, if that's something Zalinda can send to us. And then when she sends them out, maybe whoever's on the committee can just see.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, what specifically are you looking for? The, the rentals for the?
Just our rentals, um.
By, by building?
Yeah, if there's repeat, so for example, my, my concern is if, if we can consolidate some of the rentals to maybe a few locations, see where they are. Obviously the PTOs, the PTAs are gonna wanna meet at their schools, but if there's things going on, like I know there's a meeting going on at one of the schools, cause where we normally meet is, um, it, there's a scheduling conflict. So I know that's a non-school related meeting that's happening, um, for an organization. So just ideas to see who's renting, can we consolidate to, you know, keeping them in a, in a handful of locations? Cause if the buildings are already open and people are already there, we're paying that energy anyways and we're paying that electricity.
Right. And typically that's Brockton High School, you know, that's one that's, you know, you could probably consolidate almost all your meetings here at Brockton High School for whatever P, P, you know, PAC there is or PTO, but, uh, you're right. They, do they need to meet in the schools that their, that their PAC is, is representing or can they meet anywhere?
I mean, it's nice for them to get familiar with the schools and a lot of times there's things hands-on, but a lot of times.
You can do that on certain nights, like parent nights, you know, the open house nights, they could, they could certainly, they're gonna be there anyway on the evening, so. But maybe those consolidate those PAC meetings to those same evenings where they do the open house nights.
Definitely, so that's, we're gonna do that.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Cops, are there any, um, any issues or anything that's come up in the first few months of the school year with any of the facilities and the buildings that you think we should be aware of or that we should report out to the committee as a whole? Any new items, new issues?
Uh, well, Mr. Rodriguez, I already mentioned the Gaudet Building and it's something I meant to bring to this. It's on my list of, a larger list of things to, going forward, you know, what are we gonna use the buildings for? What's the best usage and, and, you know, that's a concern, cause I understand conceptually when, when we created that, gave the space to the, to that community center, it was supposed to be at North for a year or two when we had the building shut down and renovated and that, with the pandemic, shut that down fairly quickly, but. So we, then we worked with the mayor's office for the Gaudet Building for the community center, um. But quite honestly, I need that building, you know, and, and that's just, you know, we, we're looking at trying to put people in different places and, and it, it's something that, you know, I appreciate the work that they do for our students and, and tutoring students and, um, but they have the building all day long, all year long and, and, and quite frankly, we can tutor our students just as well as anybody else.
All right.
Okay, just.
Yep, I'm gonna say a sec.
Sorry, one last thing. Dr. Cops, uh, update on the auditorium. How are we coming along with the Brockton High School auditorium?
It's done.
Oh, it is?
So we, we, the students are using it again, they're, they're able to do their, uh, drama classes on the stage. So right now, I think we have two dates, the training and commissioning, um, the twenty-fourth and I think the next one is in early November, like I think the seventh, so. The lighting, everything's installed, ready to go, it's, it's beautiful. I mean, it's much brighter than it has ever been, but it's, it's done, um, for the most part, just, just the commissioning and training.
So I know we, we, we lost money on a lot of rentals for dance recitals, that I know. So many dance, dance companies had to go outside and, um, rent. Are we gonna reach out to them, let them know this is done, we're ready for those?
We did, they, they've been inquiring over the summer and we told them it would be closed for the summer, but, you know, we, we, we scheduled October second as the opening date to finish and we, we did, we had the, the custodial facilities crew over the weekend, cleaning up. So again, it's ready to go and a lot of them inquire, will it be ready for the summer or the spring recitals and?
No, thank you.
Yes, we can go ahead and Zalinda's already taken some of the bookings for them.
Perfect, cause I actually, um, my nieces were in a dance recital and we went to East Bridgewater, it's beautiful. Beautiful auditorium, but it's tiny and they had to do multiple shows and, um, so I, it's rare to find an auditorium our size. And, um, so as long as we don't lose our repeat, repeat renters.
It's beautiful, the lighting is, is amazing and, and the new technologies for the, for the sound system and lighting system. If, if you have, get a chance to walk in there and see the new speakers, they're, they're, they're huge, but I, I can't, I'm waiting, cause I told them before I sign off on, on paying the last payments, I wanted to see a demonstration for the, the system and the sound. I can imagine with the, if you saw the new speakers that are in there. They're like, they're, they're, they're like a rack of them that twice the size of these, side by side and, and.
Nice.
Like six feet tall, um, and I can't imagine what it sounds like compared to two speakers sitting on the sta- on the stage, you know.
So the sound system that was here, did we take it to one of the middle schools?
Um, it was pretty integrated.
Okay, cause I thought we were gonna like.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the sound system that we had was two speakers on, on either side of the stage. You know, we can use them someplace else, you know, but, um, right now, um.
Okay, no, perfect. I, again, that's.
And actually what we did was, actually it's a very, great question actually, Joyce, is some of the lighting fixtures that we had, the stage lighting fixtures, we're gonna take to other schools so they can, they can use them.
Can we get some over at the, um, Ashfield? I haven't had lighting over there.
We have tons of them, we kept all the old fixtures and, you know.
If I can get some over at the Ashfield, um, I'm, I'm, I, I know that they've, their stage has been needing some stuff, so whatever we can get for the Ashfield middle.
Even the, the big, you know, like the spotlight, you know, the big machine, we have brand new and two brand new ones, or the older ones are still living there to do something with, yeah.
Perfect. And, um, so, and again, that's where some of our rentals, that's, we're talking about over ten thousand dollars. I know that was years ago when my nieces went to Denise Buitt, so I can't imagine what, what the rentals are now for some of the dance recitals, cause some of them do use it two, three days, all day for two, three days.
They do, and then you have the summer, what, what do they call it? At least their summer program, the, uh, the six.
Or the drama club?
Oh, Act One, Act One, Seem.
Act One, Seem, Act One, Seem.
So again, that's, this is, that's like good rental that comes in.
We're back in business, we're, we're ready.
Thank you. Looking forward, maybe before one of our meetings, maybe do a tour?
See it, yeah.
Maybe in November?
Range for a demonstration for you.
Absolutely.
Speaking of sounds, we need to look at the sound system at the, uh, stadium.
Oh, I, I know.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I just gotta.
Need to make an investment there.
Died again and we, you know, we, you know, the problem is, you know, at some point you're gonna have to bite the bullet and spend the money for a, a upgraded sound system, you know, whether it's, I think the last price I got was twenty thousand dollars, which is not a lot of money for, this is, we, we, we spent all the money on a new scoreboard and, and, you know, then we go to Amazon and buy an amplifier to, to do a patchwork on it. We needed to spend the money to install a state of the art system and be done with it, yeah.
But we say twenty thousand dollars, but there's a lot of people that will sponsor. There's a lot of companies that are out there that will sponsor and to have, you know, sponsor, put their name on a banner for, for that season, twenty thousand dollars and if we reach out, like, with the, we cannot personally reach out, but if Brockton Public Schools reaches out and looks for sponsorships, that is like free money. but if Brockton Public Schools reaches out and looks for sponsorships, that is like free money. I know when we do that for our festivals and stuff, asking for the sponsorships, any company. I know in my personal business, I sponsor, and that's, a lot of people want to help us. And that's an easy way, whether you can do a small amount of money or a large amount of money, if you're, if you're a big business or-
You know, I understand that, but, you know, at some point, like I said, you know, I did operations for five years, you know, and we have a, we have a budget. We have a quarter of a billion dollar school budget for this school. And twenty thousand dollars is not a lot of money to upgrade the system and be done with it. And repair the roof so we don't get, get the things leaked on and they burn out again. And just, it's just operations, it's something you need to do and get it done. You know, like, we've done a lot of infrastructure upgrade to this district, you know, that's a simple one. It's not that, not a lot of money to get it through.
And that money's already allocated in the facilities.
Absolutely, we, the facility budget is within our budget, we just need to spend it.
Okay.
All right. I know, are there any other, any other items? Okay, I know next week on Tuesday, there's a policy subcommittee that we had put on our calendars.
Policy manual or policy?
I think, I think at our last policy subcommittee, I think we talked about keeping the seventeenth open at six P.M. And I know at the prior subcommittee meeting this evening, I think you guys spoke a little bit about reconvening the safety and transportation.
The seventeenth is a parent advisory meeting at the Red Cafe at six P.M.
Do we have, is there any other available time where we could reconvene? And we could go over some of these rental contract histories? Or maybe get, we could do an inventory, then we could reconvene, we could give an update about what we find for an inventory. Maybe if we can get that done before the end of October, and we have an inventory all lined up, we could present that to the committee, the full committee in a November meeting time. But I think I also, I want to be able to go back and address the rescheduled dates, the items one and two, with the consideration of the easement for the Boys and Girls Club, to keep that conversation moving, too. Is the twenty-fourth a viable option?
I think Mrs. Rivas Mendez scheduled a tentative DEI, and I thought she scheduled an accounts review at our school, because I put DEI on the twenty-fourth. I could be wrong, but I put that in my calendar for the twenty-fourth at six P.M. Because I'm on that subcommittee, but then I thought she did an accounts review as well for that same evening.
Okay, so if it's not seventeenth or twenty-fourth, we maybe, maybe the members-
Well, the thirty-first, we're gonna be giving out candy, Mr. Homer.
We'll be busy on the thirty-first.
We're gonna be busy on the thirty-first, but we can try for the first. If, again, we might need a couple of weeks to just, you know, get some answers on those two items that were on the agenda. And then give the, give the facilities department, give Zalinda some time to, and Dr. Cops to get us information.
You looking at the November 2nd, it's Tuesday, there's nothing on that date right now.
November 2nd, the Thursday, first is the Wednesday. And then the following week, the seventh is the election.
So, yeah, Halloween is the thirty-first.
Yeah, so it pushes us pretty deep into what we're getting into, the week right before Thanksgiving. Then if we kept to a Tuesday night, if we didn't consider a different night.
We just don't know what the, what the committee as a whole is gonna be doing as far as the, now that they're looking to get the independent audit, we just don't know what meetings they're gonna be scheduling. That's the only thing, we want to make sure we-
Have Melinda set us, give us an overall, what the schedules are?
Okay, we can do that, and then we can-
And then see what's, what's open, because we also have dates lined up for contract negotiations with-
Twenty-fourth is Wednesday.
Yeah, a couple of the unions, so.
Yep.
We just look at the whole calendar, and then we just map it out from there.
Okay, and then we'll make a, we'll make a posting for that. Once we have that squared away, we'll publish an agenda for that, and we'll get that put out so that everyone will have access to it.
I think that gives everyone opportunity to get their meetings in before the end of the year.
Sure. Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, then I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Say.
Okay, motion to adjourn made by Miss Asak and properly seconded by Mr. Rodriguez, all in favor. And that's unanimous, and we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.